I call to order the 2022 Annual Town Meeting for the town of Needham. Welcome, Town Meeting members, to Powers Hall, our familiar confines where we returned on a pilot basis last fall and, given all of your cooperation and the cooperation of numerous others, were able to reconvene again. Beginning our proceedings tonight, I would like to introduce some very special guests. Arrayed before you in the front of the hall are the Vintage Voices. They are the singing choral group from the Needham Aging Services Department. For years, Tom Gallant has been the driving force, the leader and the keeper of music of this organization, and in recent years, Margie Brodsky and Carlo Cucuzzo have been the musical accompanists. The group are always looking for new members, so contact any of them or contact the Department of Aging Services if you would like to join. The members performing tonight, and they're very gracious to do so, are Dave Searsdale, Mary Ann Searsdale, Tom Gallant, Betty Leary, Bob Quinn, and, as I mentioned, the musicians accompanying them, Carlo Cucuzzo and Margie Brodsky. Ladies and gentlemen, to begin the 2022 Annual Town Meeting for the town of Needham, the Vintage Voices.
(Music) 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 Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Have a great meeting. Thank you very much to the Vintage Voices and many thanks to Aisha Kelly at the Department of Aging Services for helping and for arranging our visit. Absolutely inspiring and fantastic. In keeping with our patriotic observations and in keeping with our tradition, at this time, I would ask you to all, please rise and to further honor our country, to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, the United States of America's flag is to my right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you could remain standing for just a moment, we do traditionally have a call for spiritual guidance at the commencement of our annual town meeting sessions. We have suspended that over the course of the last couple of years in order to keep our proceedings brief and with the eye towards resuming it. This year, I am aware that many of the members of the Needham Interfaith Clergy Association are dealing with their own reopening issues and they're quite busy in managing their appearances before various bodies and their own congregations. And so, I decided not to trouble them this year with the production of a schedule of members of the clergy association who could come. I do promise you, we will resume that next year, and it's a wonderful tradition. It's a time-honored tradition here, but for the time being, we will not have it this year. So, in order to keep with our pause in our call for spiritual guidance, which is usually led by a member of our clergy, I would simply ask you all to take a moment here to, in your own way, reflect, and if it is within your ambit to seek spiritual guidance, to do so in your own way for just a moment of silence. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. As you all know, we had a rather rare occurrence this year in that because of the census that was conducted in 2020 and the redistricting that has to occur upon the completion of the decennial census, all town meeting members had to run for their positions if they were an incumbent, and new town meeting members also ran for positions in town meeting. According to the town clerk's records, we have amongst us, 20% of our body are new town meeting members who have never served before. So, for those of you who are re-elected, I ask you to help your new town meeting members and be a source of guidance and peer counseling. We had a wonderful orientation for new town meeting members that was hosted by the League of Women Voters, and for our new town meeting members, I welcome you. I don't want to repeat everything I said at the orientation, but I wanted to say that your choice is a wise one. You're joining a body of your peers, your citizen friends, your neighbors, who are committed to the best for this town. So, at this point, before I can declare a quorum, we have to make sure that all of you are official. So, we come to the swearing-in of our newly elected town meeting members, which is everyone. So, for the purpose of swearing-in new town meeting members, I recognize our town clerk and the supervisor of our elections, Mrs. Theodore K. Eaton.
Would you all please raise your right hands? Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially perform your duties to the best of your ability and according to the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts? I do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Eaton. All right, now the easy part's over. Now you have to get to work as a legislator and a representative, so this will be fun. I'm happy to say that the moderator declares that a quorum is present and finds that the meeting can conduct its business, and I would ask the town clerk to record the presence of a quorum in her records. The next matter we have to attend to is the reading of the annual town meeting warrant. For this purpose, I recognize again our town clerk, Mrs. Eaton.
To either of the constables in the town of Needham in said county, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Needham to vote in elections and in town affairs, to meet in their respective voting places in said town, and you are also required to notify the qualified town meeting members of the town of Needham to meet in Powers Hall at the Needham Town Hall on Monday, May 2, 2022, at 7:30 PM in the afternoon, then and there, to act upon the following articles.
Thank you, Mrs. Eaton. Having completed the reading of the call to the meeting, I seek unanimous consent of this body to waive the reading of the annual town meeting warrant in its entirety. Hearing no objection, I find unanimous consent, and I would ask the town clerk to complete the reading of the warrant by reciting the officer's return.
By virtue of this warrant, I did on April 25, 2022, notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Needham to meet as within directed by posting true and attested copies of this warrant in not less than 20 places in said town, which April 25, 2022, was more than seven days before the time of holding such annual town meeting. Richard Graham, Constable.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Eaton. And now, just to go over the arrangement of our meeting space, you have been admitted to this floor because of your status as a town meeting member. The entire floor, first floor, is reserved for town meeting members and town meeting members only, as well as certain elected officials and appointed officials who will from time to time visit. The marshal here, Mr. Jakes, is available to assist you, and he will enforce the limits of the dedicated space that has been reserved for town meeting members, not unlike the floor of a legislative chamber you would see in Washington or on Beacon Hill. As always, I ask you to please wear your badges that identify you as a town meeting member. Any guests here, registered voters who are here, or others who are guests that are here, I want to remind you all that you cannot vote. If we start voting by voice, only town meeting members can vote. Once situated, I do ask you to try to stay in your seats and not move in terribly dramatic ways around the floor. This floor has been laid out with certain assumptions in mind for public health purposes, and we really appreciate your cooperation. As was described in the informational memorandum that I circulated to town meeting members, face masks are optional. They certainly may be worn by anyone who chooses to do so. The circumstances and arrangements for our meeting have been vetted by our Needham Director of Health and Human Services and other interested parties, and we feel very comfortable that we are in compliance with the current state of public health protection. If you choose to wear a mask, as I said, you're certainly welcome to do so. You may keep that on at all times, even if you choose to address town meeting. That's perfectly fine. You don't need to remove it in order to address town meeting. Also, as I mentioned, and as you know, there is no informational table at the rear of the hall tonight. All materials for town meeting have been posted to the town website and available for your review in advance of town meeting. Other materials, sometimes the same materials, but other materials were sent to your homes via U.S. mail, so there will be no handouts here. Video presentations from sponsors and the Finance Committee were also posted in advance of town meeting on the website, and this is a technique that we have used at the beginning of the public health emergency, and we have kept it. I hope you've all had a chance to review those video presentations, which constitute the affirmative presentations by the sponsors of each article and also constitute the commentary of the Finance Committee. So, tonight, what we're going to do, being consistent with what we did last fall, is we will permit the sponsors of the articles, if they choose, it's completely their option, to speak to you very briefly tonight, to remind you, when there's 40 or so articles in the warrant, I want everything to be fresh, like people to make sure that they have current and recent information. So, the proponents are going to be permitted, if they wish, to make what I'm calling reminder remarks to you for no more than five minutes. Similarly, the Finance Committee has the option, if they choose to use it, to also remind you of some of the positions that they put forward. Now, it's interesting to set a cap of five minutes when some of the affirmative presentations by the Select Board, for example, were 40 seconds long. So, I don't want a situation where the reminder message is longer than the affirmative message, but I didn't exactly expect that to be the case, but so it is. When we engage in discussion, you may address town meeting only after being recognized by the moderator. At that time, we'd like you to move to one of the fixed standing microphones that are around the hall. There is also a microphone in the balcony for any registered voters who wish to speak. As a reminder again, and consistent with the materials that I have passed out in advance of town meeting, please raise your hand, please shout, Mr. Moderator, so that I can see you. I do want to make sure that I see people so that I can call on you, and if you wish to speak and address town meeting, you have a good chance of being able to do so. The microphones are distributed here. There's one here. Main proponents, of course, for their reminder messages can use the center podium. Mr. Jakes can help you if necessary and direct you to the right microphone. At some point, we may have a brief recess, just to stretch your legs, but I did want to encourage you that if necessary, if, for example, you'd like to use the restroom during our session, please feel free to do so, so that if we do have a recess, we don't have a big congregation of people in line. So, I'm glad to see you all. I think these rules will help, and I think they'll be conducive to a productive meeting. I appreciate your patience and your understanding. We're not as we were before. I don't know if we ever will be, but we're certainly trying to move on a road towards a more normal, a more engaged, a more accessible town meeting following the pandemic. I'd like to move on to our rules of order and rules of procedure. Again, please, in order to be recognized, rise, raise your hand, shout out, Mr. Moderator. When you are called on, please state your name and your precinct clearly, so the town clerk can record your participation in the meeting and keep accurate records. If for some reason relating to a disability or for other reasons, a member cannot rise or raise their hand or shout out, Mr. Moderator, please inform me so that appropriate accommodations may be made. Anyone entering or exiting the meeting area during our session, for example, if one leaves to use the restrooms, please just be careful not to disrupt our sessions and use the utmost care, because we will be in session. Please silence all cell phones or other electronic devices upon which you might get notifications or alarms. I know it's important to get those little LinkedIn notifications every once in a while, but maybe for just a few hours, we can just silence all that stuff. I'm going to do it right now myself, and so we're in good shape. And I think also, I think this is our time to, as much as possible, be together, to be engaged in what your fellow town meeting members are saying, what your town officials are saying, so I think it's important that we direct our attention to town meeting and the events of town meeting. Obviously, if you're using a device, if you've downloaded the warrant on your iPad or something, that's perfectly fine, but, you know, no cartoons, and I'm sad to say, please, no live streaming of the Bruins game, no cheers or things like that. I'm sorry that it coincides, and we won't talk about it. We'll just wait till we get home and find out what happens. There are no firearms or weapons allowed in the hall, except in the possession of law enforcement personnel. As a sign of respect for this legislative chamber, I would ask you to refrain from eating or drinking in the hall. There's no smoking in the hall. No hats may be worn in our chamber while we are in session, except for medical or for religious reasons. Members and non-members alike are reminded that this hall, this town meeting, is a meeting at which we put the utmost emphasis on civility, and for that reason, we observe the rules of civility and courtesy within these four walls. A speaker will be ruled out of order who refers to individuals or to personalities or who, in the judgment of the moderator, exceeds the bounds of civility. Please remember, we are one town meeting, we are one community, and we are devoted to one common goal, which is the best interests of the town of Needham. The moderator shall enforce all rules. All commentary, remarks, and inquiries must be addressed to the moderator as chair of the meeting. Your attention is drawn to the disclosure required of an attorney who is employed by one who has an interest in a matter before town meeting, as set forth in Article 1, Section 1.7 of the Needham General Bylaws. Blank forms for lengthy motions are available from town council and should be employed. If lengthy or complicated motions are not drafted and submitted for review by the moderator and by town council, the speaker will be asked to yield the floor while the drafting and review process is underway. Short motions to amend, procedural motions, need not be in writing. Parliamentary motions, such as point of information or point of order, shall be strictly construed so as not to elongate or permit debate after a motion moved previous question has been placed on the floor. Questions asked for general informational purpose unrelated to a matter under consideration by the meeting shall not be in order. As stated in the memorandum that I sent to town meeting members in connection with this meeting, our meeting is, as a great courtesy, being livestreamed by the Needham Channel and ultimately will be televised as well. Any inappropriate conduct involving the live coverage or the television cameras will be ruled out of order and will be swiftly addressed by the chair. I seek unanimous consent to adopt the following rules of practice concerning debate for this meeting. As I mentioned, there will be no full affirmative presentations by proponents. When I call an article by its number, the corresponding main motion will be placed on the floor, and any previously filed motion to amend or motion to refer from the proponents will as well. At that time, proponents of the main motion have the option of speaking for up to five minutes for the sole purpose, the sole purpose, of reminding town meeting members about the subject matter of the main motion and the points that were previously raised in the previously recorded and available videos. The Finance Committee may also present brief reminder remarks. Time limits for general discussion. Motions, including motions to amend, town meeting members speaking from the floor during discussion, non-town meeting members, visitors other than attorneys, five minutes each, all inclusive per article. Responsive remarks by sponsors, the Select Board, the Finance Committee, or other members of town boards or departments, five minutes in total per response. I seek your unanimous consent for the adoption of these rules of procedure and practice for this annual town meeting. Hearing no objection, I find unanimous consent, and the rules of procedure and practice, as described previously, are voted and adopted, and I would ask the town clerk to record this in her records. Moving on to the warrant now, there are a couple of announcements relating to that. First, as it relates to any changes in the affirmative main motions from the article, the text of the article that is in your warrant, there is one this time, and in particular is Article 23, appearing on page 38 of your warrant. The main motion has been corrected to replace the incorrect total appropriation that is referred to in the body of the article with the correct total, $3,116,314. That is the amount that appears in the article. As you notice at the end of the table, that is the correct figure. The figure that was printed in the warrant was incorrect. This is a non-substantive change to a main motion and is permissible, so the main motion you will vote on will have that typographical error corrected so that the two amounts agree. This is always a favorite. Articles under which proponents no longer have an interest in presenting to this town meeting, and these are also known colloquially as withdrawn articles. The list consists of nothing. So, there are no withdrawals for you to note this year. Next, articles that are subject to motions to amend or other motions from their sponsors and therefore cannot be passed by unanimous consent. There are three. Those are, on page 27, Article 10; on page 37, Article 21; and on page 46, Article 31. So, those articles will not be read to you in the next phase of our opening procedures, and that is to construct a consent calendar for this annual town meeting warrant. As is our custom, we will move now to the consent calendar. I will read the articles by number, and after I read the article's number, I would ask anyone who desires that that article be placed on the floor with its accompanying main motion for discussion, debate, possible motions, and a vote, to express their view by saying "question" after I call the article's number. There has been a lot of information available to town meeting members, and hopefully, prior to this meeting, members have had the opportunity to view the presentations posted on the town website, to review the materials that have been circulated, to ask questions through the FAQ process that has been set forth on the website as well, to review the information that has been mailed to your homes, and to collect information on your own, as representatives tend to do. So, when you consider the warrant and you consider the articles to be discussed, I ask that you act thoughtfully and carefully and consider which articles truly warrant and truly merit discussion at this meeting, and if you believe that the article should be discussed and should be voted, then it is your absolute right to ask for that. Those articles for which nothing is stated will, as is customary, be placed on the consent calendar and will be deemed adopted by unanimous consent. Once this occurs, those articles and the main motions thereunder will never be discussed again at this meeting. So, with that, I'm going to move to the warrant, and I'm going to move through the numbered articles in the warrant. Article 1 is our annual town election, so it requires no action by you. As you can see, the annual town election is actually part of our warrant, so it's actually part of our annual town meeting. It is Article 1, and it has been completed by the voters. It is Article I, and it has been completed by the voters, not by you, but that one goes to the voters. There is no action under Article II, committee and officer reports. Certain reports were filed in advance, written reports, under Article II relating to an article from the 2021 annual town meeting, which required some reports by the planning board and also the Finance Committee both have posted remarks. So the first article that we move to for the consent calendar is Article III. Article VII. Article VIII. Question. Article IX. Article XIII. Question. Article XVII. Question. Article XVIII. Article XX. Article XXIII. Article XXV. Article XXVI. Question. Article XXVII. Article XXVIII. Article XXX. Article XXXII. Article XXXIII. Article XXXIV. Question. Article XXXV. Question. Article XXXVI. Article XXXVIII. Article Forty. Question. Article Forty-one is our omnibus article and is not currently populated. Just a moment while I compare my notes with town clerk. We have constructed a consent calendar together, and it consists of the following articles. The following articles were called by the moderators to town meeting. Inquiry was made of town meeting as to whether or not the members wished to discuss these articles and the main motions therefore. The main motions have been on file and publicly available through the town clerk's office for at least seven days in advance of town meeting. And the articles for which no call was made are the following: IV, V, VI, IX, XI, XII, XIV, XV, XVI, XVIII, XXII, XXIV, XXV, XXVIX, XXX, XXXX, XXXXI, XXXXIX. No request for discussion, debate, or vote being made. The articles, as read by the moderator, are hereby deemed passed by unanimous consent, and I declare those articles disposed of.
I rise to make a motion to advance consideration of an article?
Need to identify yourself in your precinct and then state your motion. There's nothing else pending on the floor at the moment.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Paul Sigintola, Precinct E. I rise to make a motion to advance consideration of Article Forty. Citizens petition.
Mr. Sigintola makes a motion to advance consideration of Article Forty. Citizens petition amend general bylaws. No other business pending on the floor, motion to advance consideration is in order, it is in proper form. Mr. Sigintola, I would now ask you to state the reasons for it, as it will require a vote of town meeting. You seek to advance consideration. I take it to a sooner time than currently in sequence. Please state when you would like it considered and the reasons why.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to have this considered as the first article on this upcoming Wednesday, May 4th, town meeting. The reason is that if it's called in numerical order, it's likely to come up next week, and unfortunately, I will be out of town picking my son up at college and can't avoid that trip. I am the primary sponsor of this article and have worked for several months pulling this together. I would very much like to be here for the debate and to add my views. I appreciate the courtesy of my fellow town meeting members if they could extend this to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sigintola. Mr. Sigintola makes a motion to advance consideration of Article Forty, specifically to advance it to be the first order of business to be discussed at the continued annual town meeting on Wednesday, May 4th. He has stated his reasons for his request for advancement. It is a motion that is subject to discussion and a vote. So I open the floor to discussion on the motion. Hearing none, we come to the vote. On the motion to advance consideration of Article Forty, all those in favor, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Opposed by "nay."
Nay.
The ayes have it, the motion carries. The article is advanced. We move now to the first controversial article, controversial in that it was not unanimous consent, not controversial in the controversial sense. So the first order of business here is Article III. And under Article III, Ms. Mary Ann, excuse me, let me just verify that. Ms. Mary Ann Cooley moves to establish elected officials' salary. The text of the main motion is identical to Article III appearing in your warrant.
Good evening. I'm Jim Healy from the Finance Committee, and we come before you on Article III, and the Finance Committee recommends adoption of this article. I'll be very brief. This is an article that must be voted on every year pursuant to Massachusetts law. Second, the reason there is a different salary for the town clerk position is in the event that a new town clerk is elected in April prior to the annual town meeting, you need to have a salary in place that was different than what the incumbent has. Third, there are certain benefits that the incumbent is entitled to based on her longevity with the town, but please know that almost all of those benefits are no longer in existence for a future town clerk. And last, the Select Board stipends, although very small, please note also they have not changed since 1977. The Finance Committee recommends adoption of Article III.
To provide the Select Board's reminder presentation, I recognize Ms. Cooley, Chair of the Select Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. This is a regular article in the warrant. It's one that we see every year. It lists the salaries of elected officials. There are, as you see, two salaries for town clerk. One is for a town clerk with years of experience, such as we have, and the other is for a town clerk with no or very limited experience. In the event that a new town clerk were to be elected, that would be the salary for a new town clerk. The other salaries listed here are for the Select Board Chair and members. Those have remained where they are for many, many years, and there have been questions asked about those salaries. We have elected to recommend that they stay where they are. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Ms. Cooley. Does the Finance Committee wish to provide any additional information? Mr. Healy, member of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, fellow town meeting members. The only two additional comments is there are a number of benefits that are mentioned within the warrant article. Some of you may be wondering if those benefits are continuing. The answer is not. Some of them have already been discontinued, and some of them will soon be discontinued. But they have to be in this warrant article in order that town meeting have the opportunity to approve it, and the Board of Select and Stipends have not changed for over 20 years. Finance Committee recommends adoption of Article III.
Thank you, Mr. Healy. Discussion of the main motion under Article III? Yes, sir.
Thank you. The bulk of this article is the salary for the town clerk who is, Aaron Pressman, Precinct D., sorry. The bulk of this article is the salary for the town clerk who is elected. If the town clerk were appointed and not elected, we would have had to have a very different piece of article in front of us. The Needham League of Women Voters has asked that the town clerk position be changed from elected to appointed, and it's become a very complicated job, and a lot of other towns have done this, so my question is for the Board of-
Sir, that is beyond the four corners of the article. This is just simply to approve the salaries as stated. That sounds like it's an issue for another day, but I can't allow that. Discussion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. On the main motion under Article III, Ms. Cooley moves to establish elected officials' salaries. On the main motion, simple majority required for passage. All those in favor, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Opposed by "nay." The ayes have it, unanimous vote. The motion carries, and I declare Article III disposed of. The next item for your consideration is Article IV. Oh, excuse me, excuse me. You're right, you're right. Just a second. Article VII. Article VII.
Let's talk trash, specifically Article VII, appropriate for RTS service delivery study. Prior to any significant capital investment into the RTS, it might be prudent for us as a town to decide how we want to do trash. Should the town remain a drop-off community or convert to curbside pickup? If the town converts to curbside pickup, does the town provide the service or does the town contract it out? If the drop-off system remains, what investments would be required to ensure that the facility is operational for the foreseeable future? This study will examine all infrastructure, equipment, and staffing needs at the RTS, and this is where you come in. You need to appropriate $50,000 for this study. We believe it'd be money well spent, and the Select Board recommends adoption of this article. Thank you.
Fellow town meeting members, my name is Dick Riley, and I'm a member of the Finance I introduce Article VII regarding the RTS service delivery study. As the write-up contained in the warrant suggests, the funds being appropriated by this article will be used to evaluate options for addressing the town's treatment of solid waste and recycling services. This seems to be a very prudent approach before embarking on a capital expenditure program. Regardless of which direction we go, whether it's to make improvements to the existing site or to introduce a curbside pickup, either approach will require significant capital expenditures, either in the building out the existing facilities at the RTS site or in the equipment necessary to cover curbside pickup. So whatever options emerge from this study, we'll need to be carefully vetted with respect to both the short-term implementation costs and the longer-term operating implications. The Finance Committee expects to be actively involved throughout this process. The funding source for this appropriation is the overlay surplus account. The Finance Committee unanimously recommends adoption of Article VII. Thank you.
Under Article VII, Mr. Kevin Keen moves to appropriate for the RTS service delivery study. The text of the main motion is set forth in Article VII with no changes. On the main motion, I recognize Mr. Keen, member of the Select Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, town meeting. Prior to any significant capital investments in the recycling transfer station, the RTS, it might be prudent that we as a town discuss how we do trash. This proposed study would evaluate the service delivery models for the RTS. The study would examine if the town will remain a drop-off community or convert to curbside pickup. In short, this study will examine all infrastructure, equipment, and staffing needs required for the town's solid waste disposal needs into the future. This is where you, town meeting members, come in. You are being requested to appropriate $50,000 for this study. It'd be money well spent. The Select Board recommends adoption of this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keen. Does the Finance Committee wish to make any remarks? Mr. Dick Riley, member of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Fellow town meeting members, have you heard, it seems very prudent, before we embark on a capital program with respect to handling of waste services, that we take a survey. I can assure you that the Finance Committee will be very much involved in analyzing both the capital cost to get any program started and any ongoing expenses that would be attributable to that. So those will be thoroughly vetted by the Finance Committee. We urge your adoption of this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Discussion of the main motion under Article VII. Yes, in the back.
Michael Disler, Precinct G. Couple of questions. I think we all recognize that there is an increasing number of people in town that are using a private trash pickup, and I just wanted to stand, is this study going to take that into account, that there's a decreasing use of the dump? I mean, you know, to look at, what if it was everyone using the dump or is everyone being curbside pickup? That's just not a realistic scenario today. Secondly, I believe about five years ago, we did a study looking to improve the efficiency of the dump, I think it was about 200K, and just kind of surprising the big difference in numbers here. I just, if you could talk a little why this is so much less than that other study. And lastly, on that study, I'm just curious if any of the conclusions of that study is being used as input to this study. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Disler. Question for the sponsors, the Select Board. Mr. Keen, to respond to the members' three questions?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you for the questions. I think on private pickup, yes, absolutely. That is included as for the other studies. They are actually being folded, or the results of those studies are being folded into this anticipated study. Thank you.
And just any, Mr. Keen, the member asked about the difference in cost. Is there any appreciable difference in the study? I think is what he was asking for. This amount of money versus the other.
Mr. Moderator, I've been told that Town Manager's Office has done some of the work that may account for the price differences.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Keen. Excellent. Discussion. Mrs. Sockel.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Lois Sockel, Precinct I. I just have a simple question, please. Would this mean you would shut the dump? Does this mean I couldn't go to the dump? I just don't know. Is it going to be an either/or? Or is the study going to result in how I have to take care of my trash? In other words, will both be available? Or will I lose my dump?
Very well, Mrs. Sockel, thank you. I get the point. And I'm going to direct the question again to the sponsors. Mr. Keen, speaking on behalf of the Select Board.
Thank you. That's the best question of the night. There will be a dump, there'll always be a dump. There is recycling, there is brush, there is logs and other whatnot. And then as to question, what will it look like? That is what the study is going to examine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keen. Discussion. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joanne Ochella, Precinct G. I'm in support of this and just wanted to add some comments and requests for the proponents. As you go forward with this study, we're hoping, I'm hoping, and others that have spoken to me, that this study will, one, take into account that we're a green community and sort of the values of that, so that if that can sort of be illuminated in the choices that are being discussed, issues of equity, that what's best for everyone in town, as well as possibly a town-wide survey. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ochella. Further discussion of the main motion? Yes, sir.
Jeff Heller, Precinct F. I rise as a chairperson of the Solid Waste Disposal and Recycling Advisory Committee, and I support this motion. I think it'll be interesting to bring to light for everybody the complexities of the, you know, the choices. There are many who think that it's a no-brainer, and why don't we have curbside? But I think they will learn around the issues around compliance and contamination that we talk about so often, that I'll be talking about later also. So I also want to just reflect on, I think 10 years ago, maybe, there was a study that was also a task force that the Select Force, Selectmen, Select Board asked for, that I chaired this study committee that wrote a lengthy report looking at, and there was involvement with FinCom as well to question the sustainability of the model. And with that report, that was probably the result of us no longer having a sticker fee. So I hope that'll be also included in this study. I would assume so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heller. Further discussion, the main motion under Article Seven. Hearing none, we come to the vote. Under Article Seven, Mr. Kevin Keen moves to appropriate for an RTS service delivery study. The amount of the appropriation sought is $50,000. Majority required for passage. On the main motion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. The ayes have it, unanimous vote. The motion carries, and I declare Article Seven disposed of. The next article for your consideration and discussion is Article Eight. Under Article Eight, Ms. Mary Ann Cooley moves to appropriate for a parking study. The appropriation is $135,000. The text of the main motion is identical to the article appearing as eight in your warrant.
Good evening. My name is Jim Healy from the Finance Committee, and we recommend adoption of Article Eight to appropriate $135,000 for a parking study. The Finance Committee was impressed with the fact that this is an important goal of the Select Board. Also, there has not been, a parking study has not been done in the recent past. The other importance of doing a parking study at this time is that there are still considerations of what we might do with respect to our streetscape in the downtown Needham area. Therefore, knowing what our parking needs are and what our parking uses are will help us inform our plan with respect to what that streetscape may be. This money will be paid for out of the Parking Meter Fund, which is currently has a balance of $380,000. And if this article is approved by town meeting after the $135,000 is spent for it, that will mean the Parking Meter Fund will have a balance of $245,000. This project will take approximately 15 to 18 months, and the monies will be spent throughout that period of time. The major area for this study will concentrate in the downtown Needham area. There may be some review of the heights, but for the most part, this will be a review of the downtown area. The Finance Committee recommends adoption of Article Eight.
If you wish, Ms. Cooley, to provide some summary remarks from the Select Board, the sponsors, Ms. Cooley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. The purpose of the parking study is to really understand more about the parking needs of the town. We could think parking never changes. We always need more of it. People always want it in the right place at the right time exactly where they need it. But beyond that, what's happened is we last designed a Needham Center project, the downtown streetscape, and we designed that over 10 years ago, or about 10 years ago, to get the maximum number of cars through the center of town. Then we've all spent the last two years living through a pandemic, and people have really come to appreciate the joys of being sitting outside and eating outside and getting out and walking and riding their bike, which is prompting us to rethink both of our town centers here and in the Heights. So we are going to take a look at a variety of things in this study, understanding what kinds of amenities people actually want out on their streets, understanding what amount of parking is right and where the placement of that parking might be. Do we want parking meters? Or do we want that parking handled in a different way? Those are all things that would apply both to the Heights and to Needham Center. There's a variety of other things that we have. We have permit parking for our various merchants in town. We don't permit them to use permit parking on a Saturday. Should we? You know, so different issues to be considered. All of that will be taken a look at. Overnight parking in town lots? Do, are there private lots that might have time when they could have parking available to town residents? We'll look at all that and see what makes sense. The Select Board recommends adoption, and we ask for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Cooley. Providing some summary comments from the Finance Committee, Mr. James Healy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. Very briefly, the Finance Committee believes that a parking study is a necessary component of any potential changes that may be recommended in the future with respect to the streetscape work that has been ongoing now for a while. The study will inform the Select Board as to what recommendations they may want to make when they come back to town meeting for those potential changes in the event they feel as though they would be for the benefit of the town. Just two other small points. It's very important that the alternative payment options be fully vetted and fully discussed during the study. That will occur. And second, this study will be paid out of the Parking Meter Fund. The current balance of that fund is $380,000. After paying for this study, it would still leave a balance in the Parking Meter Fund of $245,000. The Finance Committee recommends adoption of Article Eight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Healy. Discussion, the main motion under Article Eight. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Carlos Agualimpia, Precinct C. While I fully agree that it's important to take a look at what the parking situation is for the town, my concern is the timing. There's this huge project being built in the place where the Muzzi Place was, and that might impact parking in the rest of the town. So my question would be, is it the right time for this study? Or should we wait for that project to be finalized prior to invest $135,000 in it?
Very well. Thank you, sir. Question for the sponsors. So I'll turn to the Select Board to respond to the member's question about the impact of the development of the former Muzzi parcel. Ms. Cooley, Select Board Chair, speak to the member's question.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We do still think it's the right time to do that. There was some preliminary traffic work that sort of hypothesized certain types of developments related to the Muzzi project. There will certainly be more detailed traffic studies related to that. We'll add that understanding to this particular project. But this project, I think, gets at the 90% case as opposed to the 10% or the 5% or the 2% case, looking at what's going downtown, and really is aimed at what the needs and wants of the citizens of the town are as opposed to whoever it is who will be at 557 Highland, which is the official name. Thanks. The Select Board does ask for your support of this article.
Good luck changing the name of that parcel to 557 Highland. Further discussion of Article Eight, the main motion thereunder. Hearing none, we come to the vote. Under Article Eight, Ms. Mary Ann Cooley moves to appropriate for a parking study. Text of the main motion identical to the warrant Article Eight in your warrant. On the main motion, majority required for passage. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. The ayes have it, majority vote declared on a voice vote, and the motion carries. I declare Article Eight disposed of. The next item of business for your consideration is Article 13. Oh, my goodness. You know, I made two lists this year. I should have just stuck with one list. I'm always trying to improve. Article 10, well, that's not important. Article 10. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for keeping me on the straight and narrow. Under Article 10, Mr. Joshua Levy moves that the town appropriate the fiscal year 2023 operating budget. And further, Mr. Levy tenders a motion to amend the main motion under Article 10. Mr. Levy's main motion is identical to the article preamble appearing as 10 in your warrant. The motion to amend reads as follows. Moved that the main motion under Article 10 be amended by deleting in line five, Retiree Insurance and Liability Fund, the sum $7,844,474, and inserting in place thereof the sum $8,844,474. And by deleting the sum $2,625,000 to be transferred from free cash and inserting in place thereof the sum $3,625,000. Speaking to the main motion and the motion to amend at the same time, Mr. Levy, Chair of the Needham Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and fellow town meeting members. Pleased to present this motion to approve the fiscal year 2023 general fund operating budget. The main motion under Article 10 is that budget, and it appears in pages 19 through 21 of your warrant. In addition, following the printing of the warrant and over the course of subsequent discussions, the Finance Committee identified an additional $1 million of unappropriated free cash, and that's the reason for the motion to amend. We think that it's prudent at this time to add that unallocated money to line five, which is the OPEB or Retiree Insurance and Liability Fund. That's a fund for retiree costs. And right now, as of June 30, 2021, those, the liability was funded at 46.6%. So if we can top that up a little bit, we think that that would be a good financial move. The largest increases in the budget from the prior year are in townwide expenses, education, and in public works. The largest increases among the townwide expenses are attributed to the retirement assessments in line six and to group health insurance, employee benefits, and administrative costs in line three. These increases are in connection not only with rising costs in general, but also to the growth in the number of benefited employees in the town. In addition, there's a proposed appropriation of $1.3 million to the classification performance and settlements line in line nine. That serves as a reserve to fund new collective bargaining agreements that will appear before the May 9 special town meeting. Funding for education is always, as we know, a substantial part of the budget, and that's in line 21. The budget fully funds the recommendation of the school committee and represents an increase of $3.7 million, or 4.4% over the current year. These costs do not include group health insurance. Those appear in the townwide expenses of school department employees. And also, just to note, line 21 does not include school building costs such as maintenance, energy, or debt costs. Those are also funded through other lines of the budget. The school budget increase is driven primarily by contractual annual salary increases for existing staff and by the additional 25.82 full-time positions being added to the department. These, it's an unusually large number, but they are necessary to meet the increasing demand for student support services and for special education. These needs have been driven to a great extent by the pandemic. 21.48 of these positions have actually been introduced already over the past year on a temporary basis through the use of pandemic relief funds or statebreaker circuit funds. So we would be moving these into the budget for the following year. The budget for DPW in lines 23A through 23D is increasing $1.3 million, or 7.3% over the current year. That increases in part due to additional staff, primarily related to building maintenance. The pandemic has shown us that HVAC is our top priority, and some of our older buildings, even some of our newer buildings, need a lot of attention on that front. In line two of the budget, debt service is declining for the second consecutive year due to decreases in excluded debt and CPA debt costs. $969,623 of the debt service is paid for in this proposed budget by CPA receipts, and this is the mechanism for accounting for CPA debts. So all the debts appear in this one-line item, line two, but they are offset by an amount from the CPA reserves that go to fund this line. This line does not include costs of debt that might be authorized through other articles of town meetings, such as the proposed appropriation for the Emery Grover renovation. Those debts, if authorized, would be serviced beginning in subsequent fiscal years. In line five of the budget, the contribution to Retiree Insurance and Liability Fund is increasing 418,000 or 5.6%. That is aside from the motion to amend. The motion to amend would increase that to a total of $8,844,474. In line eight, Injury Duty, Injury on Duty, 111F, that is a new line item of the budget that's appearing for the first time here, and that consists of funds available for payment of injury leave, compensation or medical bills for public safety personnel who are not otherwise eligible for workers' compensation. So it's a similar program, but specifically for public safety personnel. And unspent funds from this line at the end of the fiscal year would be carried over to the Public Safety Injury on Duty Fund, which town meeting created last year to fund future injury leave costs. In lines 11A and B, the Select Board and Office of the Town Manager Budget is increasing 6.7%. But I would note that over 60% of the increase is due to the Finance Committee's recommendation to add $50,000. recommendation to add $50,000 to the expense line in order to fund the new diversity equity and inclusion program. The Finance Committee felt that it was important to include it in the budget from the get-go rather than through a separate warrant article. And lastly, in line 31 of the budget, this is also new. It's for the Needham Council of Arts and Culture, and this is a supplement for a similar amount of funds that is received by the Needham Council for Arts and Culture from the state. The council operates autonomously and provides grants for projects and programs to support culture and arts in Needham. This appropriation would also allow for more long-term planning for the council. I just want to quickly thank the town staff and department heads who provided fantastic input and answered all of our questions as we were going through the budget process, and I thank Town Meeting members for their careful attention to the budget. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. Ms. Cooley, any remarks on the motion to amend or the main motion? Very well. Very well, then. We will move into the discussion of the fiscal year 2023 operating budget, the main motion under Article 10. We have a customary rule that we apply when we are going through budgets of this nature: the operating budget, the enterprise fund budgets, which were approved by unanimous consent, the cash capital budget, which we will reach in Article 23. That rule is very simple, which simply says that any motion to amend an appropriation set forth in the budget will not be accepted unless, if that motion to amend increases the appropriation, it will not be accepted unless a source of the funds is identified in order to make it fair and provide some parity as to if something's being added, where is that going to come from? Either another line item in the budget or another authorized source, such as a revenue source. So we typically have that rule. That rule has worked well in the past. I seek your unanimous consent to apply that rule for our discussion of the main motion under Article 10 and also the cash capital budget under Article 23. Hearing no objection, I find unanimous consent. The rules show for processing the budget as it is on the floor as part of the main motion under Article 10 is adopted. So we'll move first to the beginning of the budget, and for new Town Meeting members, please let me explain just briefly what we will do. We will move through the budget on a line item by line item basis. I will pause at each line item, and that is an opportunity for Town Meeting members to ask questions about the recommended appropriation for that particular purpose. The budget is an opportunity to ask questions about the operations that are being funded by the appropriations sought through the Finance Committee's budget. That is also an opportunity, as I mentioned, if there is a desire to make a motion to amend. A motion to amend would be appropriate at that time at a particular line item, as long as the motion to amend conforms to our rule. We would discuss the motion to amend. We would put it to an immediate vote, and if it prevails, we would adjust the appropriation within the operating budget. If it fails, we would move on. Once we move on to the next line item, after we have paused, and I think in computer language it's hovered over that line item, when we're through hovering, we will then move on, and once we hover, we never hover again in the back. We go forward only, excuse me. Forward only. Forward only. All right? So let's start. We will begin on page 19 of your warrant, the annual operating budget for the town of Needham. And we will begin with townwide expenses. Line item number 1, casualty liability property and self-insurance program. Line item number 2, debt service. Line item number 3, group health insurance, employee benefits, and administrative costs. Line item 4, Needham electric, light, and gas program. Yes, sir?
Jeff Friedman, Precinct F. I have a general question, but I would think it might affect line item 4, which is the effect of the increase in inflation. The CPI went up to, that is, the Consumer Price Index hit a 40-year high of 8.5% beginning of this year. It's expected throughout 2022, maybe go up. So I just, general question as to what effect that would have on expenses. Thank you.
Certainly, Mr. Friedman. And by expenses, you mean the expenses that are subsumed within line item 4?
That is correct, but it might be affecting other items as well.
We can't do that, so. We'll ask about 4, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Very good. Mr. Levy, Chairman of the Finance Committee, to respond to the members' question about the impact of inflation on line item 4, Needham electric, light, and gas program.
So we are aware that certainly inflation is an issue, but for this line item, we have contracts in place that, at least for the time being, can stabilize some of the expected increases. Also, on a year-to-year basis, what we tend to do is we look at averages over past years. So that certainly doesn't, that mitigates to some extent the expected increases in inflation. But what we'll do is, and we'll certainly be monitoring this closely if there are any changes.
Thank you, Mr. Levy.
I just have a question regarding the solar panels up by the dump, whether or not they have alleviated the increases, and whether or not we are planning to have more solar panels on existing buildings. I know the, is it John Chusick Building they're talking about, and whether or not even the high school west side roof would be available for solar panels?
Sure. Thanks, thank you, Ms. Krukschak. I'll put that question to the Finance Committee, town officials, whoever would like to discuss the impact of solar panels on the expense item, Needham electric, light, and gas program, and the prospect for future mitigation with solar. Mr. Levy?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, the solar that we have at the RTS is a power purchase agreement, so we sell the power that we generate back to the electric grid. So it does mitigate costs. So as energy prices increase, in addition to the energy prices we have to spend, we gain more as we sell the energy back to the grid. As for other potential projects, we are investigating the Jack Hogswell Building as another building that solar panels can be put on.
Ms. Cooley, thank you, Mr. Levy. Ms. Cooley, to add to the answer to the members' question regarding solar.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just specific to solar, I think it's fair to say that the town looks at the best available energy options that we have on every building project that we have, and that's solar and other energy-efficient options.
Thank you, Ms. Cooley. Continuing discussion on line item 4, Needham electric, light, and gas program. Very well. Line item 5, retiree insurance and insurance liability fund. Yes, sir?
Aaron Pressman, Precinct D. I strongly support adding, the amendment adding more money to fund the OPEB shortfall. I'm curious if we could see the outcome on free cash if the amendment is passed, what we're using free cash for and the different sources, and how much would be left. Thanks.
I'm sorry, sir. Could you just repeat that? I couldn't hear just the last part of it. If you could just speak a little louder.
How free cash would be impacted if the amendment passes.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Levy, to respond to the members' question.
Thank you. So as of March 30, there was $16,952,126 certified free cash available to the town. In the warrant, as written, there's $15,900,000 that's planned for appropriation if all of the, our warrant articles were to pass. This would be an additional $1 million, and there may be another motion, another article to add some additional free cash. So the status is that we are using much of our free cash here.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. We are on line item 5, retiree insurance insurance liability fund. Moving on to line item 6, retirement assessments. Line item 7, workers' compensation. Line item 8, injury on duty and 111F. Yes, sir?
Lance Brown, Precinct D. My question is with regard to this line item and warrant article number 33. For this item in the budget, why do we allocate money in the budget rather than just relying on a fund to pay for these expenses? Questions for the Finance Committee?
Sure, Mr. Brown. We'll put it to the Finance Committee. Mr. Levy?
Thank you. So last year, we created the 111F and the fund, workers, excuse me, the 111F injury indemnity fund at the same time. Right now, we don't, because it's a brand-new fund, we actually don't know what the target should be of that fund. So over the next year, maybe a couple of years, we're going to identify the proper target for that fund. Meanwhile, it's, we think it's important to put some money in the budget as well. The mechanism is that when money is not used in that particular line item, it will be rolled over at the end of the year into that fund.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. Discussion, injury on duty, 111F, line item 8. Line item 9.
Mr. Moderator, I actually had a question with respect to...
Okay, you have to raise your hand, say, "Mr. Moderator," and seek recognition by the chair. So I'm happy to do that. So please state your name and your precinct, and you're welcome to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Lawrence Cohen, Precinct F. I had a similar question with respect to line item 8, and perhaps it's my confusion, but if we approve this amount, and to date, there is no amount in that fund, why do we have Article 33 before us?
Hold on, Mr. Cohen. There's some conferring going on. Well, why don't we just answer the first part first?
So what we've done in the past, since this is a new line item, we had always budgeted for this money. What we're doing right now is we are just separating out traditional workers' compensation from 111F. These monies in the 111F line are meant to cover costs that we believe are reasonably reasonable to be incurred. The future article for the fund is meant to cover additional costs for the future as a reserve for unknown costs that could arise.
Mr. Cohen, you have another question?
Then the follow-up, Mr. Moderator. Assuming then that Article 33, just for the moment, does not pass this body this evening, we've then funded this new account with $151,000, which was not approved by this body. Am I right?
No. The townwide expenses will be approved by this body if the budget is adopted.
Well, I understand that, Mr. Moderator, but this amount will be a part of that adoption, even though there's no threshold Article 33 approval in which to put the funds.
Mr. Levy?
The funds that you referenced in the other article already exist. We have all accreted it. It just has no money in it as of now. So approving the monies in this warrant article of the budget would not affect a later article. So there would still be a fund that the monies could be moved into if they needed to.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Discussion, line item 8. Line item 9, classification, performance, and settlements. Line item 10, reserve fund.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Zimbone?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion to amend. However, before I do that, I have a couple of questions, if I could, as they relate to another expense line item. The first question is with respect to maintenance of the playgrounds around town. What line item is used to pay for those expenses? And secondly, once that's identified, how much money is allocated in that line item for those expenses? Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I forgot, neglected to mention my name in precinct, and it's Rick Zimbone, Precinct H.
Mr. Levy, to respond to the members' question?
So minor repairs are covered in the park and rec budget. For anything major, it would be a separate warrant article that comes before Town Meeting.
Mr. Levy, there was a horn going off. Would you just repeat that just slowly?
Louder.
And louder.
Minor repairs come out of the park and rec budget. Major repairs would come from a separate warrant article approved by Town Meeting. In this budget, we have several different components of minor repairs. So there's playground fields, park and building repairs, pool repairs, and the amounts you asked, I believe, $7,000 budgeted for pool repairs and $1,500 budgeted for playground, field, park, and building repairs.
Mr. Zimbone, I'm sorry. We all have to speak louder. If you could just speak just a little louder, please, sir.
I'm sorry. I couldn't hear the dollar value in the items.
For pool repairs, $7,000 is budgeted. For playground repairs, $1,500. These are for minor repairs.
And do we have any money in the budget for major repairs, Mr. Moderator?
I think Mr. Levy can address that separately. Mr. Levy, respond to the members' question?
Major repairs would generally be through a separate warrant article.
Okay. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make an amendment to the warrant and amend... Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make an amendment to the warrant and amend line item for the Reserve Fund by the sum of $25,000 and have that added to the expense line item under Park and Recs dealing with playground maintenance. And I make that motion because I feel that our playgrounds are totally inadequately maintained to the point where the $1,500 just can't adequately cover some of the problems that exist. There's a number of unsafe conditions on a number of the playgrounds. I've noticed that when my grandchildren go to the playgrounds to play, and I'd just like to make that as a motion to amend. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Zimbone, let me repeat your motion to amend. Mr. Zimbone moves line item 10, a motion to amend, excuse me, under Article 10, a motion to amend the appropriation of the Reserve Fund on line item 10, decreasing that appropriation by $25,000 and increasing the amount of requested appropriation under line item 29B, Park and Recreation Department expenses. Does that sound right, sir?
That is correct. Thank you, sir.
Okay. So Mr. Zimbone makes the motion. The motion is on the floor, motion to amend, and there is discussion on the motion. Mr. Levy?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would just comment that the park, when we submit budgets, when departments submit their budgets, they make requests for monies that they need, and there was no specific request of this nature that was requested by Park and Rec. Given that the amount is targeted from the Reserve Fund, the Reserve Fund is available for departments to come and ask for money that was not expected. So over the normal course of business, any department can request monies from the Reserve Fund, so it need not be transferred in this manner.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. Discussion on the motion to amend. Hearing none, we come to the vote. Mr. Zip...
I apologize.
That's all right. Just please move to the microphone, state your name and your precinct.
Peter Pingatour, Precinct I. Just want to make sure that we're all talking about this, talking the same language. We talked about major repairs and minor repairs. First of all, I'd like to know if that's something distinct, a minor repair is distinct from maintenance. What we know is maintenance. We maintain our home by doing various things in order to extend the life of it. And related to that, I'd like to know if in these requested, the budgets requested by the departments, and in particular with respect to Park and Rec, if there's a line item called maintenance.
Say, the member has two questions. One is, is this, is the distinction between minor repairs and maintenance, is there a distinction between the two? And the second question is whether or not the Park and Recreation Department has a line item in their budget labeled maintenance, their budget request. And certainly feel free to involve the Park and Recreation Department or the Town Manager as you see fit. Mr. Levy to respond to the members' question.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Perhaps I was too specific. All departments have various maintenance lines. In addition, they have lines in the budget for supplies and contracted services that in, on occasion, provide maintenance. So the aggregate maintenance costs are greater than just the $1,500 that I had previously mentioned. Those are earmarked for even more specific purposes, but in general, there are maintenance costs available for all departments that require it.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Levy, I think the member was saying, is it in their budget? That is, do they request maintenance funding in their budget, is what I think the member's asking?
Yes, they do.
Okay. Yes.
About a week or so, or maybe within the last month, we found out that the Claxton Playground was taken down when work was done and found that there was plastic and metal shards in the ground. So it was determined that for safety's sake, it should be removed. So could someone please tell us what is the plan to replace that playground? I would assume that falls into the major category. It may have happened since the budget was drawn up, and I think we would understand that, but what exactly is that plan?
Sure. I think, thank you, Ms. Clark, and I think maybe just I could ask if we could, just using my obligation to direct a question to individuals who may have knowledge about an answer, maybe either the Select Board, the Town Manager, or the Park and Rec Commission could speak to this and respond to the members' question. That would be great. I'll recognize Ms. Cooley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It will be the subject of a future warrant article and a future request.
The Claxton Playground?
Correct.
Okay. Yes.
So to be clear...
Talk to me, Ms. Clark.
Sure. Mr. Moderator, so I just want to understand. So the playground is gone, and maybe next spring we'll come back and ask, or maybe next year? So the...
So you want to know, Ms. Cooley said it would be the subject of a future warrant article.
Yes, I wonder, when?
When that is.
When that would be.
Okay. Sure. We'll put that question to Ms. Cooley. Ms. Cooley?
Mr. Moderator, I would ask if Mr. Gerstle might be recognized?
Certainly.
For Parks and Recreation?
Yes, Mr. Chris Gerstle, member of the Park and Recreation Commission. You are the chair, you're the current chair, Ms. Gerstle, as I recall.
That is correct, yes. Thank you very much. Yes, it was determined that we needed to take down the Claxton Playground just for safety issue of the particle stuff that we found in there, so we want to take it out to safety. What we do at regular Park and Rec meetings is we actually go through a five-year plan and playground surveys of every playground that we have. So what we do is we determine of where we're looking on the list of the most prioritized ones and what needs to be done. This is something that not can be done quickly, so we're evaluating every single playground that we do have, and we will adjust and moderate of what playground should come up on the next list. What we ideally will do is look for a warrant article when we do major products to reinvest in the playgrounds and create new ones. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Gerstle. Excuse me, sir. While you're there, I don't know if you want to address the motion to amend. There is a motion to increase your expense budget by $25,000, your department's defense budget, uh, defense.
Defense. I know in the Park and Rec, I mean, we're always looking for more money, because, I mean, we can only budget so much that we're trying to get in there that we can never always foresee items that come up, that, I mean, we would welcome an additional, you know, increase into our line budget for maintenance, for playgrounds, and any other apparatuses that we have around town. Thank you.
Great. Surprising answer. We are still discussing the motion to amend under line item 10 of Article 10. Further discussion?
Moderator.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Paul Alpert, Precinct C. I want to make sure, Mr. Moderator, that I understand the effect of this motion to amend. I am understanding this to mean that if it passes, an additional sum of $25,000 will be available to the Park and Rec Department to spend as it deems appropriate for the maintenance of the playgrounds, whereas if it doesn't pass, and they feel that they need money, they have to go to the Finance Committee to request money out of the Reserve Fund, and then the decision-making processes by the Finance Committee rather than Park and Rec. Do I have that understanding correct, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, you do, Mr. Alpert. I mean, you just left out the first part, which is they've already gone to the Finance Committee and secured a budget appropriation, which is the one that's in, that the Finance Committee has put in the warrant. That's the first step.
Right, which only covers $1,500.
I don't think so. I think that...
Well, that's the number that Mr. Levy mentioned for maintenance of the playgrounds was $1,500.
Well, the expense item in the warrant for Park and Recreation is $238,336. I don't think there's any earmarking that Town Meeting can do. It goes into a line item for expenses, and it either increases it or it doesn't increase it by action of Town Meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Someone just said, "Mr. Moderator."
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Georgina Arieta Rutnek, Precinct J. I am not sure if this is the right line item to ask this question, but it is a Reserve Fund. So my concern is that the Town of Needham currently has a civil rights lawsuit pending, and I was just wondering if there was any kind of, is it not within...
Can I just, yeah, I understand you have a question about the Reserve Fund. Right now, though, I, we are, we are in this motion to amend discussion.
Okay, got it.
I'll be happy to recognize you once we get through this.
Sure, got it. Thank you.
Yep. So further discussion on the motion to amend the Reserve Fund line and increase Park and Recreation expenses. Ms. Levy, do you want to be recognized? Yes?
I feel like I may have caused a bit of confusion. I apologize. The total amounts in this budget for Park and Rec, for playground repairs, $10,000; park repairs, $3,500; field repairs, $5,000. That's in addition to other available monies for repairs.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. Further discussion on the motion to amend. Yes, sir, in the back.
Jim Rutnek, Precinct J. I'd like to speak in favor of this. I think investing in our kids is great. I think it increases our home values. I think people move to a town to get schooling and to have good opportunities for their kids, and it doesn't involve an iPhone. Thank you.
Doesn't involve what?
An iPhone.
Oh. That's a fair point. Discussion on the motion to amend?
Evan Rouse, Precinct D. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to speak in opposition to this amendment. If the Parks and Recreation Commission, you know, feels that they're being underfunded by the Select Board and or the Finance Committee, they certainly can insert warrant articles themselves, they can start citizens' petitions and so on, but the just general precedent of someone coming to this body and, you know, sort of grabbing money that the elected, that the commission hasn't even necessarily asked for seems kind of strange, and I urge the Town Meeting to vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rouse. Discussion? Yes. On the motion to amend?
Patricia Crookshank, Precinct H. Just a little history.
Ms. Crookshank, could you just move a little closer to the microphone, just to elevate it, just to, your voice just a little bit?
Okay. Patricia Crookshank, Precinct H. We have taken money from other parts of the budget. I remember the Science Center many years ago was facing maybe elimination or whatever, and the Town Meeting decided to go in various places and brought money back to continue the Science Center. But in this regard, I've lost my train of thought, I would vote in favor of this. I think there's an awful lot in the fields and in the playgrounds that need to be taken care of, so I would vote in favor of this.
Thank you. Further discussion in the motion to amend?
Doug Fox, Precinct F. I want to speak in favor of it, and we are elected members of Town Meeting, so absolutely we have the right to recommend one of these boards prioritize something more than others, and the town has never invested in playgrounds. We normally compare ourselves to Wellesley. It's embarrassing, us compared to Wellesley. And most of our good playgrounds have been privately funded. Greensfield was splinter hell until private money was raised for that. Newman was redone with private money by the Robey family and others. So I think if we think playgrounds matter, I do, why not allocate more money to it? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Discussion, Mr. Handel?
Mo Handel, Precinct I. Move the following, the previous question and the article.
Okay. Well, we're only, it would only apply to the motion to amend discussion.
The motion to amend, then.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. That's a proper motion. Ms. Handel moves, Mr. Handel moves the previous question as it relates to discussion under the, about the motion to amend for the newer members, a motion to move the previous question will cut off debate. It will bring the matter to an immediate vote. It requires a two-thirds vote for passage. It is not debatable, so we don't debate about whether we're going to end debate. We just vote it, and if it prevails, we will take a vote on the motion to amend. If it does not, if it does not prevail, we will continue discussion under the motion to amend. So on Mr. Handel's motion, the previous question, as it relates to discussion of the motion to amend, line item 10, within the main motion of Article 10. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Two-thirds declared on a voice vote. The motion carries. That brings us to a vote. Mr. Zimbone moves to amend the recommended appropriation under line item 10, Reserve Fund, by decreasing the recommended appropriation by $25,000 and increasing the appropriation in line item 29B, Park and Recreation Department expenses. Majority required for passage. On the motion to amend, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay.
Nay.
Jesus. And the motion under line item 10 is previously described. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay.
Nay.
Okay. Well, we're gonna, this is gonna take a little bit of time. Chair is in doubt. It's very close, and this means we go to a counted, a counted vote. And so I'm going to recruit some tellers, and we're going to swear them in, and we'll do a counted vote, and it won't take long once I get the tellers in place. Mr. Cream, would you be willing to serve as a teller? Okay. He's a conflict. Mr. Brinkhaus? Ms. Callanan? Ms. Wolf? Thank you. And over here, perhaps Mr. Harkins? No? Not enough pay involved? I understand. Let's see. This is, I'm usually, I've usually done this ahead of time. So let me see. Are there three disinterested persons on this side of the room that would be willing to serve? One, two, three? Excellent. Please come forward.
We need their names.
Are the tellers in position? They are. So we're ready for the vote. This vote will be taken by a show of hands on the motion to amend. I will ask for the ayes, and then I will ask for the nays. The tellers will take your -- the count, and then they will report both to me when I call the roll of tellers. All right? So everyone on this floor should be a town meeting member. If you are not a town meeting member sitting on this floor, you need to leave. So we are town meeting members only. Mr. Jakes indicates that we're good in that regard. So on the motion to amend, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Is the count complete? Very well. On the motion to amend, all those opposed, please indicate by raising your hand. I'll now read the roll of tellers and ask them to report their counts. Mr. Barzalai, the ayes, please.
Zero.
And the nays?
Nine.
Ms. Wolf, the ayes, please.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. And the nays?
Fourteen.
Fourteen. Ms. Han, the ayes, please.
One.
One. And the nays?
Five.
Five. Ms. Young, the ayes, please.
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three. And the nays?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Mr. Brinkhaus, the ayes, please.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight. And the nays?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. Ms. Callanan, the ayes, please.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. And the nays?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. Thank you, tellers. You may resume your seats. The town clerk and I will tally the vote. the motion carries, and the article -- the line item in Article 10 is amended. We resume our discussions of Article 10, line item 10, Reserve Fund. I can't hear you. You need to go to a microphone, sir. State your name, your precinct, and you have a point of information.
Joe Legorn, Precinct D. The motion, as I understood it, was to reduce the amount in line item 10.
Yes.
And increase the line item.
Yes.
In the other line.
29B.
29B. When you said it passed, you only referred to line item 10. My question is, does it also affect line item 29 simultaneously?
Yes. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your point of information. Further discussion on line item 10. Yes.
Georgina Arieta Rutnek, Precinct J. And again, I'm not sure if this is the right place to ask this question, but I was -- I just have a concern regarding the civil rights lawsuit that's being levied against the town and whether there's any kind of funding in place just in case it goes against the town, and I'm not sure if this is the right place to ask the question, sir.
It's close enough.
Thank you.
No, I don't mean to be facetious. I mean, it's -- a reserve fund is for extraordinary expenses, but there are other -- there's other, you know, things, insurance and such, that I'm sure Ms. Cooley, to the extent she's permitted under state law to discuss litigation and things like that, will answer -- do her best to answer your question. Ms. Cooley?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think you answered it. The answer is the town is being represented by insurance in that case.
Thank you. Ms. Cooley. Further discussion, line item 10. That ends discussion of townwide expenses, and would seem to be a good time for just a very brief stretch, five minutes, please, so we can resume.
Senator Roush is here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Before you leave, I did want to acknowledge that Senator Becca Roush has arrived and is here, and I'm sure she'll -- I'm sure she'll form a line for constituent services during the five-minute recess, so you can line up back in the back of the hall. Thank you for reminding me, Becca. Hi. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your prompt return. I called back to order the annual town meeting. And again, thank you, Senator Roush, for attending. We appreciate it when our representatives from the legislature come to our town meeting very much. Thank you very much. I also wanted to announce tonight's attendance. According to the records compiled by the town clerk and her staff, present 224, absent We are in discussion under the main motion under Article 10. We are now moving into an area that is not townwide expenses but is rather focused departmental expenses, as indicated in your warrant. We are again on page 19 of your warrant. We are discussing the departmental budgets, and we will begin with line item 11A, Select Board and Office of the Town Manager salary and wages. Line item 11B, expenses. Office of the Town Clerk. Line item 12A, salary and wages. Line item 12B, expenses. Legal Services. Line item 13A, salary and wages. Line item 13B, expenses. I'm sorry, did I hear someone? As you may have noticed, ladies and gentlemen, we have procured from the balcony an additional microphone, so there's a microphone right where the member just came out, and there is one here.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Margaret Abruzzi, Precinct D. What metrics are being used to evaluate the value and effectiveness of the current arrangement and appointment of this firm as town council, as opposed to putting the position out to bid or appointing in-house counsel and contracting out only those matters that need special expertise?
Thank you, Ms. Abruzzi. I'll direct that question to the Select Board and the Office of the Town Manager. Ms. Cooley, Chair of the Select Board, to respond to the members' questions.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. We do not have a list of metrics by which we evaluate the performance. What I would observe is that the town had an in-house counsel for many, many years. When that in-house counsel retired from service, we had made a decision that the services of one in-house counsel were in fact not broad enough to cover the range of issues that the town needed covered. So we knew that we needed to go outside to a firm. We have retained a firm, and we are satisfied with the services of that firm at this point. We always have the right to go out to an RFP at some point in the future when we determine that that's necessary.
Thank you, Ms. Cooley. Further discussion, we are in Legal Services. Line item 13B, expenses. Finance Department. Line item 14A, salary and wages. Line item 14B, expenses. Line item 14C, capital. Finance Committee. Line item 15A, salary and wages. Line item 15B, expenses. Planning and Community Development. Line item 16A, salary and wages. Line item 16B, expenses. Police Department. Line item 17A, salary and wages. Line item 17B, expenses. Line item 17C, capital. Fire Department. Line item 18A, salary and wages. Line item 18B, expenses. Line item 18C, capital. Building Department. Line item 19A, salary and wages. Line item 19B, expenses. Minuteman Regional High School Assessment. Line item 20.
Moderator?
Assessment. Yes.
Hi. Good evening again. Georgina Arieta Rutnek, Precinct J. Just wondering how many of our students from Needham attend Minuteman High School, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. This year, the number of Needham students attending is 31. I would note, over the past several years, the number of Needham students attending has increased in each year since the new -- as the new school was being built and has been completed, and we're pleased with the quality of education that students are getting there. I understand that more students have applied again for next year, and we expect to see further growth.
Thank you, Ms. Cooley. We are in line item 20, Minuteman Regional High School Assessment. Needham Public Schools. Line item 21, Needham Public School Budget. And again, I think it's probably evident from the materials that have been available to you before meeting, but for new town meeting members, town meeting, under state law, votes a bottom-line budget for the Needham schools, not a bifurcated or a specified budget with line items. So that's a function of state law. On the issue of the Needham Public Schools budget, I'd like to recognize Mr. Matt Spangler, Chair of the Needham School Committee, to speak briefly about the budget request that has been forwarded by the Needham School Committee and the School Department. Mr. Spangler.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, town meeting members. My name is Matt Spangler. I am the recently elected school committee chair for the upcoming year, and on behalf of my six school committee colleagues sitting here tonight, I'm honored to present a brief overview of the Needham Public Schools FY '23 operating budget for your view and consideration. Our budget is built to accomplish two essential goals. First, we want to ensure that we maintain a consistent level of high-quality teaching and learning for more than 5,500 students who would spend their days in our classrooms, cafeterias, and attend -- and on our playgrounds. Second, we continue to face an urgent mandate to address the wide and Second, we continue to face an urgent mandate to address the wide and complex array of academic, social, and emotional impacts that continue to affect so many young people as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. Thus, this budget includes resources with a particular focus on equity and the needs of our most vulnerable students. The Needham Public Schools FY '23 operating budget is a little more than $87 million, which includes an increase of $3.7 million or 4.4% over last year's operating budget. The majority of the increase, approximately $2.6 million, is earmarked to maintain and sustain a similar baseline of supports and programs that our families are benefiting from this current year. And as Mr. Levy mentioned earlier, tonight, approximately 72% of this increase comes from expected annual contractual salary increases. Additional expenditures are primarily driven by shifting enrollments amongst our schools and grade levels for instructional, programmatic, and student service needs. There are additional funding requests totaling $1.2 million, which include many of the positions that exist today to support our students, but for which grant and other funding sources are running out. These positions are heavily focused on promoting equity across our district, as our youth continue to be impacted by the pandemic in a multitude of ways. For example, we're investing in additional math and literacy interventionists who can work with small groups of students to build foundational skills and close gaps in learning. We have also seen a dramatic spike this year in behavioral, social, emotional, and mental health needs for our students across all schools and all grade levels. In response, School Committee and administration collaborated to fund an additional full-time school counselor for the high school, which supplements additional resources that are being requested for counseling and nursing supports across our elementary and middle school campuses. So in closing, the School Committee believes that this budget is a measured and essential approach to providing a high-quality education for our community. We believe that how our children experience teaching and learning in our public schools reflects the high expectations and value Needham places on preparing our next generation of citizens and leaders. So on behalf of the School Committee, I ask for your support of the Needham Public Schools' FY '23 operating budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Spangler. Discussion of line item 21, Needham Public Schools Budget. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Paul Alpert, Precinct C. I just want to mention that there was recently, within the past week or so, an article in the Boston Globe that was reprint from the U.S. News &amp; World Report rankings of high schools in the country. And the Boston Globe article specifically pointed out the rankings by U.S. News &amp; World Report of the high schools in Massachusetts. And I'm not going to get into the metrics of U.S. News &amp; World Report's rankings. I don't know that I fully understand them. But Needham ranked extremely high. And I was extremely proud to see how Needham compared to the other school districts in the state, but specifically in the Boston metropolitan area, in the Metro West area. And I just want to point out to town meeting what a wonderful school system we have and how it's reflected in something like the U.S. News &amp; World Report rankings. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Alpert. Further discussion under further discussion under line item 21, Needham Public Schools Budget. Yes, in the back.
Hello again. Good evening. Georgina Arietta-Rutnick, Precinct J. So I am wondering, of the 5,500 students in our schools, what portion of the students are on individual ed plans or some other plans? And my other question is also, since the pandemic, and we know that there's a lot more mental health issues for most people in general, and probably our students as well, are we going to have, or in addition to the high school, are there other support services as couns, such as counselors, available for our lower grades as well? Thank you.
Certainly. Two questions, particular as to the resource allocation in the schools. And I would direct that in ordinary, ordinarily, to the School Committee or to the School Department to respond to the members' questions. She has two. Of the 5,500 students enrolled, what portion are in ed plans? And the second has to do with the availability of counseling services for the lower grades. Mr. Spangler, to respond to the members' questions.
Mr. Moderator, currently, there are about 18% to 20% of students in Needham Public Schools that have a special education plan. And there are adequate counselors in all elementary schools, along with a social-emotional learning curriculum that's being implemented on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spangler. Discussion, line item 21, Needham Public Schools Budget. I'm sorry, what? You can ask another question.
Thank you, sir. Georgina Arietta-Rutnick, Precinct J. I'm just wondering what adequate means? Specific numbers in terms of, you know, like how many are in the elementary schools versus middle school? In terms of counselors, you know, psychologists versus psychiatrists, I guess? I'm not exactly sure. I just wanted more clarification, please. Thank you.
Mr. Spangler.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We base our ratios for counselor per student on national standards. But in addition to counselors, it's also a combination of administration, teachers, who provide wraparound services for students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spangler. Discussion. Yes, sir.
Henry Reagan, Precinct J. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to ask about the percentage on IEPs, how that compares to like districts? And if you have the number of how many, of the percentage of people who applied for special education, who were granted it or were turned down either way?
Mr. Spangler, to respond to the members' questions.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The percent of students with an IEP is comparable to state averages and in line with other similar communities. We do not have the numbers that you requested, but can furnish them and will post them.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Reagan. Thank you, Mr. Spangler. Discussion. Line item 21, Needham Public Schools Budget. Moving on. Line item 22A, Building Design and Construction Department, Salary and Wages. 22B, Expenses. Department of Public Works. Line item 23A, Salary and Wages. Line item 23B, Expenses. Line item 23C, Capital. Line item 23D, Snow and Ice. Yes.
Jeanne McKnight, Precinct F. With regard to the snow and ice, I note the decrease from year to year. And between last year and this coming year, only a slight increase. I was going to ask this question later in a particular article that has to do with the new, the amendment to the general bylaws that's proposed on sidewalk clearing. But perhaps this is a good time to ask it. I believe that the town was undertaking a pilot project of plowing the sidewalks in our downtowns, our, the town center, the heights, and trying to expand the sidewalks that it plows beyond the routes to school. I'd like, if somebody could speak to whether there indeed was such a pilot project. I know it was difficult to get workers this winter. But if anybody could speak to how that's gone and what the town's intention is for the future for plowing its own sidewalks.
Thank you, Ms. McKnight. Sure, it's a perfect spot to ask that question. And I guess I would direct that to the Select Board in the first instance. Ms. Cooley, you heard Ms. McKnight's question well enough?
I believe I did. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So the town did undertake a test in the General Business District. And with that, we were using a particular piece of equipment and shovels. Right? We haven't evaluated the success of that particular project yet. And certainly, we have not made any decisions about expanding it. But we did make a test this year. We are going to be talking about how it worked. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Ms. Cooley. We are on line item 23D, Snow and Ice. Municipal Parking Program. Line item 24, Program. Health and Human Services Department. Line item 25A, Salary and Wages. Line item 25B, Expenses. Commission on Disabilities. Line item 26A, Salary and Wages. Line item 26B, Expenses. Historical Commission. Line item 27, Historical Commission. Public Library. Line item 28A, Salary and Wages. Line item 28B, Expenses. Yes.
Hello again. Georgina Arietta-Rutnick, Precinct J. Just wondering if the expenses will cover the replacement or whatever of the Wi-Fi in the library, because it's been down for I don't know how many months now. Thank you.
Question about library operations being funded by the budget request. Ms. Cooley, to respond to the members' question.
My understanding is that we are using ARPA money as the source of funds for that, and that project is actually underway to get it fixed and replaced.
I'm sorry, Ms. Cooley, what money?
Money from ARPA, the America Recovery Plan Act.
Certainly.
Sorry.
No problem.
So I just wanted to find out when that will happen, because I know that there are people who are dependent upon the Internet services at the library. Thank you.
Ms. Cooley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We are getting real-time information here. My understanding is that contract is actually being signed tomorrow. And because it's being signed tomorrow, it must be completed by June 30th.
Thank you, Ms. Cooley. 28B, Expenses. Public Library. Park and Recreation Department. 29A, Salary and Wages. Yes.
Lance Brown, Precinct A. I've noticed, over the past few years, a precipitous rise in the, in the salary line item, but a, but only 4.6 full-time equivalents. And I could not follow that and figure out how. Also, the implied salary there is $224,000 average in the Park and Rec Department, so finance department.
No problem. Mr. Brown, we'll get you a response. Mr. Levy, Chairman of the Finance Committee, respond to the members' question.
Thank you. The full-time equivalent amounts that appear are for permanent employees. The Park and Rec Department in particular relies heavily on seasonal employees as well for the pool. So that is the reason for the increase in costs. In particular, the lifeguard, it's been difficult in some cases to hire for lifeguards. And so the rate, the salary has had to increase as a result to make sure that we can hire lifeguards.
So, Mr. Levy, I'm sorry, just to be clear for the members, so the 4.6 does not include the seasonal employees?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. Discussion. 29A, Salary and Wages. 29B, Expenses. The requested appropriation by your action has been increased by $25,000. Yeah, somewhere, someone, yes. Thanks. Mr. Demais.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rick Demais, Precinct G. This town is blessed with recreational facilities. We have many fields for soccer, baseball. We also have a large number of young people that like to skateboard. And I'm just wondering, is, are there any plans in Park and Rec, perhaps, for a skate park where they can skate and they wouldn't have to be on the street?
Thank you, Mr. Demais. We'll, we'll ask the Select Board in the first instance, and if necessary, the Park and Rec Commissioners. Ms. Cooley, to respond to the members' question.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I know that Chair Gerstl from Parks and Rec is back there, but the answer is, there is a large and growing swell looking for a skate park in town. I think I rarely go by a week without somebody calling me to talk about the need for a skate park. So what I will say is that we hear you, and I know Parks and Rec hears you. There is lots of discussion about trying to figure out where we can put such a thing. I expect we'll be having a summit at some point to try to figure out what possible locations might be available to us. And then, of course, it will come back to this body for a study and a warrant article in the future, so that it can be constructed. But we do hear you, and it's really high on people's lists to have an active park.
Thank you, Ms. Cooley. We are on line item 29B, Expenses, which, again, given your, given your previous action, is $263,336. Discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Moderator. This is Holly Charbonneau, Precinct J. I just had a question in regards to the $25,000 that we've just voted to go into this expense fund. Is there any way in this budget to have that $25,000 specifically allocated towards the parks' maintenance versus just being part of a slush fund?
I'm sorry, part of the, did, what did you say?
To have the $25,000 that we just voted to allocate towards Parks and Rec expenses, if it can be allocated specifically as a line item for maintaining the parks versus just being random slush fund?
Yeah, well, slush fund, I think, is a little extreme.
Sorry.
And doesn't really give justice to the work that goes into the preparation of these budgets.
I mean no offense. I really do
Kind of, kind of was offensive. Kind of was.
I'm sorry.
So, so the answer is no, unfortunately. So there are two line items that can be amended by town meeting members, and So there are two line items that can be amended by town meeting members, and the town meeting can amend the expense budget, and then it's up to your elected Park and Recreation Commissioners to follow town meeting's directive and request per Mr. Zimbone's motion and the action of this meeting. So the accountability lies with the Park and Recreation Commission. We don't earmark funds at such a micro level here on the town meeting floor. We could allocate it to salary and wages, or we could allocate it to expenses, or if there was a capital item, they could allocate it to capital.
Thank you for explaining.
You're welcome. Discussion. 29B, Expenses, Park and Recreation. Memorial Park Trustees. Line item 30, Memorial Park Trustees. Needham Council for the Arts and Culture. Line item 31, Needham Council for Arts and Culture. That completes the departmental budgets and the line-by-line budgets. There was a motion to amend that has already been enacted, which I have previously described, which increased line item 29B by $25,000. We have before you now two items for your attention. One is a motion to amend, the main motion under Article 10. I have previously read that to you. It pertains to the Retiree Insurance Liability Fund, and that is a motion to amend addressed by Mr. Levy. It is sponsored by Mr. Conley. On Article 10, the motion to amend, we reach it first in order to determine whether or not the main motion is further modified. So on the motion to amend, Article 10, the content of which was previously read to you, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. The ayes have it unanimous vote. The motion to amend carries, and under Article 10, this brings us to the main motion as amended twice by your action. Mr. Joshua Levy moves to appropriate the fiscal year 2023 operating budget. The text of his motion, the narrative, is precisely the same as appearing on Article 10. The motions to amend have already been enacted and have modified the main motion and amended it. So on the main motion as amended by your action, a majority required for passage. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. The ayes have it unanimous vote. The main motion carries, and I declare Article 10 disposed of. Next up is Article 13. Under Article 13, Ms. Heidi Frail moves that, in the main motion, that Town Meeting authorize the expenditure of state funds for public ways. The text of the main motion is identical to the article appearing as 13 in your warrant.
Mr. Moderator and fellow Town Meeting members, Heidi Frail speaking for the Select Board. Article 13 is an annual article in which Town Meeting must vote to accept funds received from the state designated for road projects under the direction of the Town Manager. This money is known as Chapter 90 funds and will be distributed after authorization by the legislature and the governor. The total is anticipated to be $912,849 for fiscal year 2023. The town has been reserving these funds for the next phase of the downtown infrastructure improvement project, including the design and construction of quiet zone compliant infrastructure at the railroad grade crossing on Great Plain Avenue. The downtown improvement plan was begun in 2015, and time and the pandemic may have changed our ideas and needs for the next phase of the project with regard to vehicle, foot, and train traffic. In order to make sure that the plan we construct is the plan the community wants in the face of these new needs and ideas, the Select Board will host downtown design reset workshops and public hearings this summer and spring to determine the best course of action for the project and for the appropriate expenditure of these Chapter 90 funds. Regardless of how the community decides to eventually formulate the downtown infrastructure plan, Town Meeting needs to vote to accept the funds from the state now in order to have them available for use when the time comes. The Select Board unanimously recommends adoption of Article 13.
Fellow Town Meeting members, I am Rick Lynetta, a member of the Finance Committee speaking on Article 13, expend state funds for public ways. As you recall, this is an annual article, which is body votes year over year. How this money is to be spent will be the subject of many conversations down the road, I am sure. However, for our purposes here, our charge is very clear. As referenced in your warrant, the Chapter 90 allocation from the Commonwealth for fiscal year 23 is $912,849. The town will be able to receive and expend these allocated state funds only if this body authorizes it through the adoption of this article. The Finance Committee unanimously recommends your adoption of Article 13. Thank you.
On the main motion, sponsored by the Select Board, Ms. Heidi Frail, member of the Select Board.
Mr. Moderator, good evening, Town Meeting members. What a pleasure to speak to you from this podium tonight. Article 13 is an annual article that allows Town Meeting, or requests Town Meeting approval on funding provided by the state to cities and towns for developing and improving local transportation infrastructure. These are called Chapter 90 funds, and they require your approval to be allocated to our town before they can be extended, expended, excuse me. The town's share of this funding for fiscal year 2023 is $912,849. These funds are being reserved for implementation of the downtown improvement, infrastructure improvement project, which will be reviewed prior to implementation. The Select Board unanimously requests approval of this article. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Frail. Did the Finance Committee wish to address this? Mr. Rick Lynetta, member of the Finance Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening, Town Meeting members. As you recall and just heard, this body votes this article year over year, and how the money will be spent, I'm sure, will be the subject of conversations down the road. But for our purposes here, it's very clear. If this body does not vote in the affirmative for this article, then the state doesn't give us the money. And it's $912,849. The overall balance of this fund is $4,739,556. So the Finance Committee unanimously recommends your adoption of Article 13. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Mr. Lynetta. Discussion of the main motion under Article 13. Ms. Clark.
Holly Clark, Precinct D, and of course, I agree, we have to vote to approve accepting the money from the state. I have a comment and a question. This is road money, and my, both comment and question, is about it being said that we're already earmarking it for the continuation of the downtown improvement. In my neighborhood, the folks that live down at Oxbow went to the Transportation Management Advisory Committee and very much appreciated being heard there and having the corner of Central and Charles River being put on a list to be included for improvements. The families and kids that live there do not have any sidewalks, do not have any crosswalks. That is, there is a traffic light. The intersection is so busy, we have put a streetlight there. The families that live over there are basically on an island. Those kids cannot cross Charles River. They cannot cross Central Avenue. So I understand we want to do downtown, and I listened to the presentation, the video presentation, which said there would be discussions about how we spend this money, and maybe there's other money too. But when the neighborhood went and asked, they were told, yes, you could be put on the list, but the list is very long. Well, how long is it? It would be 20 years before that intersection would rise to the top. So one of the things I'm kind of hearing tonight is that maybe folks in town want to see that their priorities could be heard a little bit more. So my question is, if there's going to be public discussions about this money, I would hope it's not going to be over the summer when folks aren't around, but is that planned? Could this money be used for other purposes other than downtown? And are there other sources of money that can be used to improve the roads and crosswalks? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. To respond to the member's question, Ms. Frail, member of the Select Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you for the question. So the Town's, the Select Board's policy is to repair existing sidewalks before adding new sidewalks, so that's one thing. The Select Board goals does include reviewing and adding sidewalks, however. And as part of this project, I think I mentioned in my video that there will be downtown design workshops. Following those workshops, we are going to have community surveys to assess priorities, so that will be part of the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frail. Discussion, further discussion in the main motion under Article 13. Hearing none, we come to the vote. Under Article 13, Ms. Heidi Frail moves that the town authorize the expenditure of state funds for public ways. A majority is required for passage. On the main motion under Article 13, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. The ayes have it unanimous vote. The motion carries, and I declare Article 13 disposed of. Under Article 17, I'm sorry, I can't read the signature of the movement. Do you have a?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Pingatory?
The present, the present, the article, 17, CPC article is for, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator, Your Honor.
Don't start that again. Makes me feel good. It's Chris Gerstle? All right. Mr. Gerstle moves to appropriate, thank you, Mr. Pingatory. Mr. Gerstle moves to appropriate for NHA pre-development Linden Chambers. The text of the main motion is identical to Article 17 in your warrant.
Hi, my name is Laura Dorfman, and I'm a member of the Community Preservation Committee. I would like to introduce warrant Article 17, a request from the Needham Housing Authority for $1,386,000 for pre-development design costs for the Linden Chambers redevelopment project. These funds would be used to engage an architect slash engineering firm to prepare the schematic design, which is required to obtain zoning relief and complete other due diligence tasks such as geotech borings and traffic studies. Completion of this work will position the Needham Housing Authority for future funding sources for redevelopment, such as state ARPA funds, low-income housing tax credits, and hard and soft loans. The requested CPA funds will be also used to create and explore options for temporary tenant relocation during the construction period. For Phase 1 of this redevelopment, it is important to note that the Needham CPA funding will jumpstart and leverage $25 million of outside, non-Needham taxpayer funding. For those who might not know, the Linden Street and Chambers Street State Public Housing Developments provide 152 deeply affordable studio units for senior and disabled individuals. They're located across the street from High Rock School. The term deeply affordable means that no tenant pays more than 30% of their income for rent. The Needham Housing Authority is the largest provider of deeply affordable housing in Needham with 456 units in total. Unfortunately, the existing Linden Chambers units are approximately 50 to 60 years old. Very low subsidy funding from the state has resulted in the accumulation of deferred capital improvements. The buildings are worn out and at the end of their useful lifetime. In addition, they suffer from a number of deficiencies by modern standards. For example, lack of accessibility, small spaces, 400 to 430 square feet in size, insufficient storage space, lack of insulation, elevators, et cetera. In the summer of 2021, the Needham Housing Authority launched its five-to-10-year Modernization and Redevelopment Initiative, the R, the MRI, which includes the objective of funding and developing the Linden Chambers property, estimated to eventually cost $150 million over 10 years, and that's in $2,022. Redeveloping Linden Chambers has been a top Needham priority since the town published its 2004 community development plan. When completed, the new units will have a 50-plus-year expected lifespan, meet 21st Century standards for accessibility, energy efficiency, space, and amenities. Redevelopment is also expected to create 100 additional new units above and beyond the 152 existing units. All units will be preserved as deeply affordable for the next 50-plus years. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jim Healy from the Finance Committee, and we respectfully ask that you adopt Article 17 to appropriate $1.386 million from the CPA Community Housing Reserve Fund for the Needham Housing Authority to conduct pre-development and design work for the Linden Chambers housing project. I will not repeat the information that's contained in the warrant, and I understand the Community Preservation Committee has already made their presentation for this article as they are the main proponent. Instead, I will try to focus on some of the more salient financial issues. The Finance Committee was first concerned with who was going to help the Needham Housing Authority manage this project. Obviously, this is a major construction project involving many different intricate construction and design processes, and we wanted to make sure that all of these monies would be spent wisely and efficiently. And we were very happy to learn that through a competitive bidding process, the Needham Housing Authority selected the Cambridge Housing Authority as our consultant for both this design work and then also down the road for the potential construction of the units. The Cambridge Housing Authority, over the past 10 years or so, has been responsible for the modernization and redevelopment of over 2,000 deeply affordable housing units in the city of Cambridge. They are nationally recognized for their work and accomplishments in this field, and they now offer their expertise to other housing authorities in the Northeast region, including now, of course, the Needham Housing Authority. You may recall that the Cambridge Housing Authority provided assistance to the town of Needham and the Needham Housing Authority approximately 10 to 15 years ago when we developed the High Rock Homes project. The next thing we looked at is what is within the $1.386 million? What are the services to be provided? And will they get us to a point where we will make progress with respect to this project? And the answer is yes. We have a very detailed list of what is contained within the $1.386 million, including most prominently and expectedly, $1 million for architecture and engineering fees, A and E, who will do this pre-development zoning and site work. There's also services that will be provided by wetlands engineers. There'll be a geotechnical report. There's going to be a traffic analysis and a site environmental report, among other items. Two other major components of this amount is a development consultation fee to be paid to the Cambridge Housing Authority in the amount of $150,000, and thankfully, there will be a 10% contingency of $126,000. In all, the Finance Committee is satisfied that the services that will be provided that the services that will be provided in this $1.386 million are both fair, reasonable, and comprehensive. The next point that the Finance Committee was interested in is why spend this $1.386 million now, and why in this fashion? And the Finance Committee concluded that now is the time to make a move on improving and modernizing our affordable housing here in the Town of Needham. We also have opportunities at both the federal and the state level, and at banking institutional level, in order for us to obtain the necessary funds that we will have to get in order to be able to actually build these units. But before we're in a position where we can actually do that construction, we need to be able to go to these lenders, and we need, and these state and federal agencies, and prove to them that we have a plan that's workable and that's doable, and that we have a site that is, that is ready for this type of construction. That's what we will get by doing this pre-development site and topography and geography work. In terms of the total project, Phase One, again, that'll be a total of 40 to 60 units to replace 24 that currently exist. Phase One is expected to cost approximately $30 million, and that includes this $1.386 million for pre-design work. Of course, we will need help to raise $30 million. But we are very confident that those sources of funds are available and will be available in the very near future. We asked the Needham Housing Authority and the Cambridge Housing Authority from where these funds would come, and they provided as follows. State, our state legislators, who do fine work for the Town of Needham, have been able to put aside $2.75 million for this project, some of which are state, other state funds, some of which are the ARPA funds. The Department of Housing and Community Development, the state agency, will be able to make available $6.5 million, some out of their public housing funds and some from other DHCD funds that are available for these types of projects. We also expect to be eligible for low-income tax credit program in the approximate amount of $12 million. And the Needham Housing Authority intends to take a mortgage out on these 40 to 60 units, and that mortgage will be repaid through the future rents paid by the occupants. In total, this $30 million is doable. It is obtainable. But in order for us to be able to make the first step towards applying for these funds, we need to tell these sources that we are ready and we have a site that can accommodate the type of project that we want to develop. From a timing perspective, if this warrant article is approved, then we will start that work immediately in the fall of 2022. Phase One would then be completed. Construction of Phase One would be completed in the first quarter of 2026, so a little under four years from now. Again, all of the monies, both for this $1.386 million, all of that will come from CPA Housing Reserve Funds. There will be no need to use any money from the tax levy or any need to increase any other taxes to our citizens. For all of these reasons, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Article 17. Thank you.
Is there summary remarks that wish to be delivered? Mr. Pingatory?
Mr. Moderator, again, I apologize. It actually is word, Dorfman.
Okay, it's Dorfman. Ms. Dorfman is a member of the Community Preservation Committee. Ms. Dorfman, to deliver summary remarks on the main motion under Article 17, Laura Dorfman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is warrant Article 17. It's for pre-development design costs for Linden Street and Chambers Street properties. The request is $1,386,000. The issue is with the property currently. There's 152 tiny studio apartments for seniors and disabled persons that were built 50 to 60 years ago. Many deficiencies exist, and the buildings are worn out. The Linden Chambers redevelopment project has been a top Needham priority since 2004. The CPA funds will be used to complete a pre-development task slash analysis, hoping to move the project closer to being a shovel-ready project. It'll also unlock future funding sources needed for construction. The CPA funds investment are expected to yield approximately $25 million in non-Needham funding for Phase One of redevelopment. The benefits for the town: after redevelopment, all units will continue to be deeply affordable for the next 50-plus years. All the deficiencies will be corrected, and there'll be a possible increase in the number of units. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dorfman. Does the Finance Committee wish to provide any summary remarks? Mr. Healy, member of the Finance Committee. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting members. The Finance Committee believes this to be an extremely important project at a very important time for our town, recognizing the condition of the Linden Chambers units. I did give a lengthy presentation on the video. I'll just try to hit the highlights. This clearly is a modernization and redevelopment project. Some of the key issues that the Finance Committee considered was who was going to manage and give consultant advice with respect to this article. And we are pleased to learn that the Cambridge Housing Authority was selected through a competitive bid to be the entity that will work with the Housing Authority on this. Cambridge Housing Authority is nationally recognized for this type of work. They actually have developed in excess of 2,000 of deeply affordable units within the city of Cambridge. They have also served as a consultant throughout the Northeast for these types of projects. The amount of $1.386 million, in essence, about $1 million of it, the vast majority of that amount, is for the architecture and engineering work and the pre-development zoning work. And the importance of that is to be able to go out and solicit more funds for those types of resources that are available for these types of projects. The funding sources want to be able to see that the town is serious about the project, has done their homework, and can give them all of the facts and figures about what type of housing can be built there, what zoning is necessary, and they need to see that. It can't be a work-in-process. The other two major components of the $1.386 is $150,000 consultant fee for the Cambridge Housing Authority, and there's thankfully a 10% contingency of $126,000. And my last comment is that with respect to what is the ultimate goal? Phase One is the ultimate goal of this particular $1.386 million, which will be a $30 million project. And that Phase One is expected to be completed in four years, and there are a variety of funding sources that the Housing Authority, both Needham and Cambridge, have identified as providing the necessary sources of funds to be able to reach that $30 million goal. As previously stated, the Needham Housing Authority would also have to allocate some amount of money, again, through the Community Preservation Committee. All of the monies for this warrant article are coming out of the Community Housing Reserve, so there is no increase to the tax levy. There are no new taxes. There is no override. The Finance Committee recommends adoption of Article 17. Thank you. Mr. Healy, now discussion on the main motion under Article 17.
I would like, Robert Smart, Precinct G. My question has to do with what happens to the tenants during a relocation period. I noticed that the article information says that part of this money can be used to explore options for temporary relocation. Can anybody from the committee explain what those options might be?
Thank you, Mr. Smart. Mr. Peter Pingatory, he is the current Chair of the Community Preservation Committee.
Mr. Moderator, on our committee is actually the Chair of the Needham Housing Authority, which is Reg Foster. So what I would do is ask Mr. Foster to come up, and he'll respond to questions concerning Article 17.
Sure. Technically, I have to ask him to come up. I don't want to stand on ceremony, Mr. Pingatory, because I know you're a very formal person, but...
I apologize, Mr. Moderator. If I may add, just for those of you who are new to the process, the CPC consists of representatives from various stakeholders, and so we always have a representative who's a commissioner from the Housing Authority, a member from the planning board, a member from the historical commission. And so Mr. Foster is our representative from the Housing Authority, which is the applicant with respect to this article.
Thank you, Mr. Pingatory. That's very helpful. Thank you, sir. And Mr. Foster, Mr. Reg Foster, member of the Needham Housing Authority, and also a participant in the Community Preservation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Temporary tenant relocation is a top priority to figure out in this next phase. One of the advantages of doing the construction in phases is that we can take a small portion of the current site that has about 24 units on it, and we expect that we can redevelop maybe upwards of 40, 50, 60 units, depending on how the plan unfolds. And in the meantime, with looking at just 24 units, one option is to just incur some natural attrition and not refill those units as we approach things. That's not a totally desirable approach, but that's one approach. Another approach is to locate temporary quarters where the tenants or residents can stay during the construction period. There are firms that will be involved in this and been hired with this money who actually specialize in coming up with strategies that absolutely minimize the impact on the current residents. We have to recognize, of course, that these units are their homes, and we have to treat them accordingly. Also, every step of the way along the process, there will be consultations with the current tenants, and they will have a lot of input and say on what we actually wind up doing. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Foster, and thank you, Mr. Pingatory. Discussion under Article 17. Hearing none, we come to the vote. Under Article 17, Ms. Laura Dorfman moves that the Town appropriate for NHA, Needham Housing Authority, pre-development Linden Chambers. The amount of the appropriation, $1,386,000. The text of the main motion is identical to Article 17 in your warrant. On the main motion, majority required for passage. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. The ayes have it, unanimous vote. The motion carries, and I declare Article 17 disposed of. The next item for your consideration is Article 19. Under Article 19, Mr. Peter Pingatory moves to appropriate for community farm growing beds. The amount of the appropriation sought is $200,000. The text of the main motion is identical to Article 19.
Welcome. My name is Artie Crocker. I am a member of the Community Preservation Committee, CPC. It is the responsibility of the CPC to evaluate proposals which are brought before us, either by the Town itself or entities within the Town. And we, as a committee, are guided by the Town's Community Preservation Act Plan. Each year, we evaluate these proposals based on funding availability and how future funding will be impacted by any one or a number of projects in total. We also look at the community benefit of each proposal and what populations will receive the greatest impact. Today, I'm here to talk about Article 19, appropriate for community farm growing beds. To see if the Town will vote to raise and or transfer and appropriate the sum of $200,000 for the purpose of funding the construction of growing beds at the Needham Community Farm, to be spent under the direction of the Town Manager and to meet this appropriation that said son to be transferred from the CPA Open Space Reserve or take any action thereof. So what I'd like to do now is share my screen, and then just go kind of just go through the process of what we're actually talking about here. So please excuse me for a month, for a moment. Okay, so here we are. So first, I'd like to just give a brief idea of what the community farm is, and so it's its mission. So the farm's mission is to increase access to fresh produce for those in need and to promote education, environmental stewardship, and community building through volunteerism. Founded on the principles of food and food justice and food sovereignty, NCF, or Community Preserv, Community, Needham Community Farm for short, works to combat food insecurity in our local community to ensure that all people have access to fresh, healthy, and safe food regardless of background and economic circumstances. So I thought it'd be useful to say, you know, to show actually where we're talking about here in town. Where is the community farm located? I think a lot of us know, but not all of us know. So here we have a kind of a pulled-up view of where we're talking about here. So if we're coming down Central Ave, we go past the transfer station, the dump, pass the transfer station, if you take a right onto Pine Street, the Central Ave, if you can see my curves, I take a right onto Pine Street. Then as Pine Street, literally just as Pine Street starts to hit Charles River Street, there's a road right there, and you can almost make it up. There's a road right there that actually goes into the old Nike site. And yes, Needham actually had a Nike site, so that's where we're talking about. Now zoom in a little bit more. There's a road coming in. There's the Needham Community Farm. There's the, there's the actual dog park in town right there. Going a little bit further. There again, there's the community farm. You can see kind of the growing beds, and there's a dog park right there. And one more step in. There's actually, that's where the growing beds will be, right there, that location. And so in directly adjacent to actually the existing community farm, excuse me. So the location itself, the Needham Community Farm, the site was, is a plateau built with compacted fill from the school expansion, the high school expansion project about 20 years ago. The site is uneven, crossed by man-made berms, and does not drain, making it unsuitable for walking or going, especially in spring or during wet summers. Drainage will be improved and leveled by, to assure safe and passable, to make it passable for users, excuse me. A walkway will be installed from the parking area to the community bed site that will allow for easier wheelchair and handicap access. The site will be fenced to prevent deer entering and vandalism. So here's an idea of what we're talking about. So again, this land came from when the high school was renovated 20 so years ago with the expansion there. And the dirt, everything was dumped in this property here and essentially compacted down, and it simply does not drain. Well, it drains extremely slowly. And because of that extreme slow drainage, it either runs off the property or evaporates back up into the air. Well, rain was not the purpose of the rain, at least when it rains in the ground. The purpose of that water is to actually infiltrate into the ground to help the cycle, the water cycle. That's what it's supposed to do. It's not supposed to hit the ground and evaporate right back up again. It's also, it's not supposed to be flowing to the wetlands, and you'll see that in a minute, where the wetlands are associated with this site. So here's the basic idea of the water cycle. I think we have a concept of it, but a lot of us don't really think of it. Rain comes down, hits the ground. It permeates into the ground, and a lot of that water actually goes, is sucked back up into the trees, and then by transpiration, goes back up into the air through that cycle. Or the water hits the ground, gets filtered through the ground, then it purifies that water into the grounds, into our groundwater. And so then, and that's, that's into the groundwater, which then makes its way over to the ponds or to lakes or the streams or the rivers, as opposed to just simply running right off into them. So here's a little bit of an idea of what I'm talking about. So here's the area again. Now, and here's wetlands associated with this area. Now, that hard boundary right there is just because this particular mapping was done with only the ridge, the whole ridgehill reservation site in mind, and not going beyond that. So that's why there's a hard edge shown there. But as it stands right now, the water hits this site, and some of it permeates into the ground, but most of it just, most of it is going to evaporate back up into the sky or just flow back or flow down into the wetlands or some other areas perhaps around here. It is not going to do what the normal cycle of water is supposed to be. Now, the beds themselves, they're going to be 12 feet by 5 feet. Now, there's going to be 135, which are 22 inches deep, which is, let's say, the normal bed that a lot of us would be used to on the ground. But now 15 of them are going to be 42 inches high to make it easier for people with a little bit more, some more physical disabilities to deal with the beds. So they'll be higher. They're going to be built by a site called Black Earth Compost. They're going to be built by a site called Black Earth Compost. Now, so the plan, so the NCF plans a community garden program to be a break, to be a breakeven one. So with the yearly license fees of $100, or at least with at least 15 of those beds being no cost to those in need, the average annual fees will be, fees will be $13,500. Assuming a ramp up of around 50 gardeners each year over first three years, the fees over 10 years will be at about $121,500. The total expenses over the 10 years are projected to be $115,060. NCF will establish a fund to replace wood frames at the end of their expected tenure loss cycle with excess fees being contributed to the upkeep and the maintenance. While the town is undertaking the expense of building the beds, NCF assumes the risk of administration, operation, and maintenance. Now, the soil itself, just, it is worth saying a little bit about soil, because we can take this for the benefit of what's happening at the farm itself, but also the benefit of ourselves and how we garden at our own homes. So the blend, is a blend of soil of Black Earth Compost, and the soil is a sandy loam from a single source and is lab-tested, just like the other soil, like the NCF's compost. They use actual soil in their blend rather than another organic component, like most, like more compost, peat or coconut core. Soil blend will resist compaction over the years and prevent poor water flow, and the soil allows bed gardeners to act like farmers, and the bed gardeners will develop their soil over the next 20 years, never needing to replace it, only amend it with compost or other fertilizers, again, supplied by Black Earth Compost. And so this is where some of the benefit comes into play, and forgive me for a second when I go back to this. So part of this land, you know, fair, fair amount of, about three-quarters of acre of this land is going to be dug up and made ready for farming. In essence, that's what this is, it's farming, which means it's going to be dug up and it's not going to look like this when it rains. It's going to be dug up and, you know, look like that, let's say, where a lot of beds, and we're talking 150 beds, where the water can hit, will drain into the soil, and because of the, below the soil, the earth is being dug up and regraded to make it work for this purpose, the water will actually infiltrate into the ground. So there'll be a shed on the property as well for the tools for the gardeners themselves. That's, and that will be supplied and maintained and taken care of by the community farm and also the farmers themselves. The gardener's preference is going to be given to Needham residents, 15 beds for those who physical conditions make it difficult to garden, 22-inch-high beds. License on a yearly basis with preference given to returning gardeners. Water sources were available on site. High-quality compost is expected to be provided beginning year two in order to maintain the soil quality. And that's some benefits to the community. Builds community through new opportunities to meet neighbors, provides an opportunity for family activity. Gardening improves both physical and mental health, including self-esteem. I know this for a fact. I built three huge, extremely raised cedar garden beds for my partner Liz, and they are a wonderful source of just getting your hands into Mother Nature and the benefit, the whole health aspect of it. It teaches the benefits of sustainability of growing and working harmony with nature, provides a source of healthy homegrown vegetables using conservative, and using conservative assumptions and estimates of the value of leisure time. 150 garden beds would provide millions of dollars of leisure time benefits over 10 years. I honestly cannot speak to the exact dollar value benefit to this, but I certainly know very well that a community that comes together for an opportunity like this and to be out there gardening, gardening like this, is a community that, that's better off than it was before this. So that much I can speak for. And that's it. I thank you for your time today. My name is Artie Crocker, and on behalf of the Community Preservation Committee, we ask for your support in voting yes on Article 19.
Article 19, appropriate to community farm growing beds. I'm happy to add that the Select Board recommends adoption of Article 19 as outlined by their proponents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening, fellow town meeting members. The Finance Committee voted to recommend adoption of Article 19 to appropriate $200,000 from the CPA Open Space Reserve for the purpose of funding the construction of growing beds at the Needham Community Farm located at the Ridge Hill Estate. The CPA Open Space Reserve is an appropriate source from which to fund this appropriation. As described in the warrant, the Needham Community Farm is requesting funds to construct 150 4-foot by 12-foot garden beds for growing vegetables and flowers. Seasonal rentals would be offered with priority to Needham residents and to others depending upon demand. The garden beds would occupy three-quarters of an acre and would be fenced in. Site access would be improved to allow disabled access to the beds with 15 beds elevated for wheelchair-bound users. The site would be regraded for improved drainage with a shed constructed for tool storage and access to water supply installed. Construction is expected to start this summer with initial use planned for the 2023 growing season. With the Needham Community Farm being a tax-exempt, not-for-profit entity that is not controlled by the town, the Finance Committee questioned the license fees that will be charged for the growing beds, as well as what controls are in place to make sure such license fees are appropriate and reasonable. We met with a representative from the Needham Community Farm, and he explained that the license fees go to support administration, maintenance, operation, and program sustainability. The Finance Committee was satisfied that the licensing fees are appropriate and not unreasonable in amount, and that all fees charged go into the operations of the Needham Community Farm. The Finance Committee views this as a worthwhile project available for funding under the Community Preservation Act, and so we recommend that Article 19 be adopted by this annual town meeting. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
On the main motion, providing summary comments on behalf of the Community Preservation Committee, Mr. Pingatory, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, town meeting members. I'm Peter Pingatory. I'm the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. I'm also a town meeting member from Precinct I. Article 19 requests an appropriation of the sum of $200,000 to the Needham Community Farm for the purpose of funding the construction of 150 4-by-12-foot raised beds for growing vegetables and using organic practices. You can see in the summary and description of it in your warrant, and it is that the farm is proposing a leased bed program. It's going to occupy three-quarters of an acre immediately next to its current activities, and it's going to be located at what we call the Nike site, which is contiguous to Ridge Hill. For those of you who have never been out there, the site where the farm works is on Pine Street. The site is a plateau built with compacted fill from the Needham, the result of the Needham High School expansion project some 20 years ago. So the site is uneven. It's crisscrossed by man-made berms. It doesn't effectively drain. The soil doesn't perk. The soil isn't suitable for growing. In order to use it for a community farm of any sort, raised beds are required. With respect to this program, the beds will be leased or licensed on a yearly basis with preference given to Needham residents and to others depending on demand. With respect to the license fees, the farm anticipates that the license fees would be approximately $100 per year, and it intends, the farm intends to use the license fees to pay for administration and maintenance and operation and to sustain the program. The farm also intends to set aside at least 15 of the leased beds to be used by SNAP recipients or public housing residents. And I will finally, I will note that last Tuesday, the Select Board voted to approve a 10-year license, or lease, if you will, a grant to the farm, so the Needham Community Farms will continue to operate at the current site for many years to come. So the project will create usable open space for our residents and will provide the ancillary benefits that community gardening is, our gardening is known for. The CPC voted unanimously in favor of supporting the farm's request, and we ask town meeting support for Article 19. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Pingatory. Does the Finance Committee wish to provide any summary comments? Mr. John Connolly, member of the Finance Committee, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening, fellow town meeting members. The Finance Committee held a hearing on this particular article. We were satisfied that this article meets the requirements of the CPC and is eligible for funding under the CPA for this work. We were satisfied that the program is well thought out, and we are satisfied that the license concept and how the license fees are applied are appropriate and well thought out as well, and that all the money that comes in from fees will go back into the gardens. For those reasons, for the many good reasons put forward by Mr. Pingatory, we recommend that you adopt this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly. Discussion on the main motion under Article 19. Hearing none, we come to the vote. Under Article 19, Mr. Peter Pingatory moves to appropriate for community farm growing beds. Text to the main motion is identical to Article 19 in your warrant. The amount of the appropriation is $200,000. On the main motion, majority required for passage. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. The ayes have it, unanimous vote. The motion carries, and I declare Article 19 disposed of. This brings us to next Article 20. Under Article 20, Dr. Joseph Barnes moves to appropriate for high school tennis courts design. The amount of the appropriation sought is $50,000, and the text to the main motion is identical to Article 20 in your warrant.
Fellow town meeting members, my name is Joe Barnes, a town meeting member in Precinct C. and a member of the Community Preservation Committee. I am the committee's liaison to the Park and Recreation Department in their request for appropriation for design funds for the resurfacing or refurbishing of the high school tennis courts. This is Article 20 in the town meeting warrant. To provide some background, these courts were installed in 2006 when Needham High School was renovated. Since that time, they have been used by both the girls' and boys' tennis teams as well as the physical, physical education department during the school day. They are also used by the Park and Recreation Department throughout the summer. Over the past 16 years, the courts have fallen into disrepair. There are now safety concerns that have, that have forced the high school teams to travel to Mills Field or to the Newman School Courts for practice and matches. Moving teams to these courts is not only a real challenge for the high school players, but it also limits the time that the courts would be available to Needham residents for play. The design funds requested will be used to determine the extent to which the repairs will be needed. If it is determined that the resurfacing is needed to rectify the problem, the project will cost in the vicinity of $550,000. If the design determines that a complete renovation is needed, the cost could be in the $1.5 million range. The Park and Recreation Department has assured us that, quote, "robust, ongoing maintenance program" is part of their plan, end quote. With these courts being well-maintained, we can expect the lifespan of the courts to be approximately 25 years. The CPC were unanimous in their support of Article 20. We ask your support as well.
Article 20, appropriate for high school tennis courts design. The Select Board by Score 15 Law recommends adoption of Article 20 as outlined by its proponents. Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Moderator and fellow town meeting members. By a vote of five to four, the Finance Committee recommends that town meeting not adopt Article 20. Many on the committee believe the courts need to be repaired. However, a majority of the members want a clearly defined maintenance plan before approving funding that may result in a $1.5 million expenditure. The concern is how these courts fell into such disrepair after only 15 years, and how can town meeting be reassured that this won't happen again? Therefore, the Finance Committee recommends that town meeting not adopt Article 20. Thank you.
Speaking in a summary way, on the main motion under Article 20, Joseph Barnes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, fellow town meeting members. Joe Barnes, Precinct C. I am also a member of the CPC. I trust that many of you have seen the video that was uploaded. We have a slide back here which gives you an understanding of the condition of the courts at Needham High School. The funds requested are for design and engineering costs for either resurfacing or for replacing of the four courts. These design funds could very likely be termed discovery costs at this time, and it won't be discovered until there is some work done. Resurfacing or reconstructing the courts cannot be determined until the courts are studied. The $50,000 funding will keep, will help to determine the next steps. The CPC was assured during the discussions that there would be a robust maintenance plan in place to add to the longevity of refurbished courts. The CPC voted unanimously to support this article. We ask your support as well. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Does the Finance Committee wish to provide some comments? Mr. Tom Jacob, member of the Needham Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Hello, fellow town meeting members. The Finance Committee had a long discussion on this article and actually voted five to four to not support it. Now, we need to understand that everybody on the Finance Committee believes the courts need to be redone. The concern was regarding what was termed by Dr. Barnes as a robust maintenance program. We didn't hear of such one. We heard an assurance, but we would like to see a clearly laid-out maintenance plan. The reason for this is the potential cost of these new courts are estimated between $500,000 and $1.5 million. These courts were redone in 2006 when the high school was redone, so they've only lasted about 15 years. So some, some concern on the committee about the maintenance plan. As I said, we voted five to four to not support the article as constituted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacob. We come to discussion under the main motion under Article 20, Mr. Seigenthaler.
Paul Seigenthaler, Precinct D. Mr. Moderator, thank you. I tender a motion to refer this article back to the Park and Rec Commission with a request to create a citizens committee or a volunteer, dear committee to study our racket sports in Needham, outdoor court-based racket sports, and determine what is it we need in order to fulfill the needs of the community of Needham. Next slide, please. And May happens to be National Tennis Month. Just as a little background on me, please, I've played tennis for over 50 years. I have taught tennis for the Park and Rec Commission. I am currently helping the high school varsity girls coach, and I have been a USTA member for longer than I can actually remember. Tennis is extremely important. It is growing in popularity. Just in the last two years, it's up 28% according to the USTA, and part of that is the pandemic, but tennis was growing before that. But that's a symptom. The reason tennis is growing is that it has been proven to benefit people physically, mentally, and socially. Their physical, mental, and social health improve. It's very interesting, a recent study in Denmark showed that people who play tennis live 9.7 years longer than sedentary folks. And think about that, 10 years, over 10% of your life you can add by playing tennis. What blew me away was that's more than cycling, more than regular gym workouts, more than swimming, by a far margin. This is a sport, this is an activity that we need to support fully in Needham, that we need to make sure that all of our community, from four years old to 94 years old, have adequate access. And in the Northeast, tennis has one of the longest outdoor seasons. You can play all the way into November or possibly December. So we really need to support tennis. I am all for supporting tennis, just not these courts. So why refer the study back? First of all, there's no stated objective to this study. It is, it says simply, we're going to take these courts that were thrown in at the last minute when the high school was, was renovated as an afterthought. We're going to take these courts and we're going to decide whether we should refinish them or them or refurbish them and completely pull them out. What's the objective? Is the objective to create high school courts for the high school team? They're woefully inadequate for a high school program. We'll get to that in a moment. Is it to add court space to Needham quickly? There are other places we could do that. Pollard has three courts right behind it that my guesses are much cheaper to renovate and get online than these very difficult courts. So there's no, just because the courts exist at the high school, there's no reason that they need to exist at the high school. Next slide, please. No, that's fine. What we need to do is we need to look at Needham as a whole, take a holistic approach, and understand where can we put courts? What do we need? What's a proper facility for our high school teams, for our youth programs, and for all the adults in Needham who play? I am right now coaching girls. We are using Mills from 3:00 in the afternoon to 7:00 at night. While the boys use Newman from 3:00 to 7:00. Then we switch on alternate weeks. And at 6:00 regularly, people are coming to play. But we need all that time because we don't have enough courts for the high school. We don't have one location where we can put the teams. So we need to create a tennis facility that can legitimately host high school matches. Just for those of you who don't know, to legitimately host a high school match, you need at least five courts. There are three singles played and two doubles at the same time. That's just one varsity team, doesn't include JV. To practice, we have 24 kids, 24 girls playing on the team, 24 boys playing on their team. We had 42 girls try out. That's how popular tennis is. And we could accommodate more than 24, but right now, we have to split our varsity and JV. They don't play against each other at all. We can't do proper ladder matches. There are all kinds of problems with going to two different facilities. The problem with this site is that it's too small. The site is too small. You'll never get more than four courts up there. Plus, it's on the top of a hill. It's very windy. That's not good for tennis. And it's under the trees, so it's completely covered with debris all the time. And that means somebody, I don't know who, but somebody's going to have to sweep those before we can host a high school match. That doesn't happen today. If you look at our peer communities and, as it turns out, our competitors in the Bay State League, Wellesley has eight courts right along Route 16 there. Brookline has seven courts, not near the high school, down in the middle of a neighborhood. Newton North has 10 courts. Newton South, which is a high school about the size of our high school, has 12 courts. The boys practice down one side and the girls practice down the other side. They're there for an hour and a half, and then they're done. Walpole has six courts. Natick has six courts. And most of these are lit as well. We're playing, I think, at Natick next week under the lights, so the JV and varsity are both playing at night. We don't even come close comparing to this. And again, it's very difficult to have our varsity and JV players practicing in two entirely different locations. And that won't get fixed by these high school courts. We are a top program in the Bay State. We are currently ranked, I think, 19th in the Globe Rankings for the girls team. There's a lot of interest in youth programs. We have lots of adults playing tennis. Youth programs need a different lining. You can line a regular tennis court with the youth program. You cannot line a regular high school tennis court with pickleball. It confuses the tennis players. It's not considered a varsity quality court.
Mr. Siegentaller, I just want to just warn you, you're kind of right at five minutes, so.
Okay, I'll just wrap up with the three objections that you'll hear from the proponents, I believe. What I've heard in talking to proponents is, why am I raising this so late? I've been talking to the former Park and Rec Director about these courts. They were resurfaced almost immediately after they were built because they failed. I've been talking to her about these courts for years. So it's not that I'm coming too late. There was no outreach to the tennis community. Nobody interviewed the high school coaches. Nobody checked the badge holders. And remember, this town meeting is the check and balance against the executive branch. We are the legislative check and balance against the executive branch. We get to ask questions and challenge any decision at any time. So there's nothing, there's no way to be too late. And won't this delay everything? A Citizens Committee could do this work just to get a catalog, research and a catalog of what we have in Needham and what we need in Needham. And we can get a lot of input from the U.S. Tennis Association. There's lots of tools out there to help us. It can be done in a matter of six months. This could come back to a fall special town meeting or next year's annual town meeting. A bad project on time is still a bad project. And finally, people will say there's no room. I'm not going to go into specifics, but there's a lot of rejiggering of our fields right now. There are four or five ideas for where we could put a six to eight court tennis facility and service our high school better, have more courts available for our town residents, and really amp up the tennis in this town.
Okay, I'm going to have to ask you to stop.
Thank you so much. We can do much better.
Mr. Siegentaller, before you leave, I want to recite your motion to refer. You have made a motion to refer the subject matter of Article 20 back to the Park and Recreation Commission, and I just want to make sure I have the rest of it correct, with a request for the formation of a Citizens Committee to advise Park and Recreation on, is it a public tennis strategy or a public racket strategy?
It's court-based racket because we don't want to ignore pickleball, which is here to stay, whether you like it or not.
I'm just, you know, this is tennis courts. So just for our four corners purposes, I just want to, I think we should focus on tennis, and perhaps some of those courts will be addressed during that process. So a motion to refer the subject matter of 20 to the Park and Recreation Commission with a recommendation to form a Citizens Committee to help devise a public tennis strategy and report back in the results to a future town meeting.
Yes, thank you very much.
Very good. You're welcome. So we have two motions on the floor at the moment. One is the main motion under Article 20, and the other is Mr. Siegentaller's motion to refer. The Marshall has, Mr. Jakes has told me there is a registered voter that wishes to speak to the main motion and can certainly now speak to the motion to refer. So I would recognize that registered voter and ask him to come forward and identify yourself, sir, and you're welcome to address town meeting.
Thanks very much. My name is Sam Williams, and I am somebody who's looking for a yes vote for the tennis courts. I myself have lived in Needham for quite some time now, and actually in the tennis industry, and I've been in it for over about 20 years now in multiple areas of the industry. And with the result of that, I've seen and been a part of a lot of the hardcore resurfacing and rehabbing throughout the area. My son played tennis here for four years at the high school, and my daughter now is currently a freshman and also playing high school tennis here. A yes vote, just granting a study to fix and renovate are now unusable for tennis courts at the high school. We need this study to figure out why, what happened to these courts? Why did it happen so fast? There's so many different reasons that courts can go, can last longer, or can fall to earlier. And we need to figure out that problem. And I think it's being able to fix it and then prevent it as well. I think if this was a turf field, if this was an indoor basketball court, it wouldn't, it would be fixed right away. I think that all of the Needham resources athletically need to be treated equally in this aspect. And I think that if we look down the road, you know, eight to 10 years ago, when there were some cracks forming, they could have been fixed and could have prevented something like this from happening. The current teams obviously need to travel to Mills and Newman to play their matches and their practices. There's a significant trickle-down effect. I think that, to his earlier point, tennis has grown. I think it's grown through the pandemic. I think it's grown, it's a, it's just, it's a life sport. People can play from 40, I mean, excuse me, from four to 80 or 90 years old. So there's always going to be that push for tennis. I think we have to identify that, and having the four courts up at the high school and having the possible ability to get them back up and running is going to increase our court usage by a third. That's significant. I mean, my daughter tells me every day, they go to practice and they have to remove people, or people are coming down for clinics at 6:00, they can't get on. And that will alleviate that problem, getting these four courts back up and running, you know, if this study. But we need this study to understand what has happened to them and what we can do looking forward. So I really implore you to really think about this and really get us a yes vote, because we should at least know what the problem is. And then from that, we figure out what to do. I think these long-term projects of an eight to 10 court facility are wonderful. I think every town wants it. I mean, let's not kid ourselves. I mean, I've been involved in the hockey part of this town, and everybody wants a rink. I think that as much as we want it, it takes a long, long time to get that done. And I think that we have to look at, we have four existing courts right there that could potentially be fixed, and I think we need to identify that. And then we could also look at the long-term process, too. But, Mr. Moderator and the town committee members, I thank you, and I hope that you vote yes for the, looking at this study. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Discussion. Mrs. Sockel. Yes, Mr. Jakes can help you if it's not at the right.
I moved it this way, so I think I'm all right.
Oh, that's great. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Steve.
I have a couple of things to say. I hadn't thought about it until I heard the two gentlemen speak. There just aren't enough courts in this town, so I don't think it's an either-or. I don't know why we can't study those four courts at the high school, fix them, and let four courts be operational, and at the same time, study the problem on a larger scope. I played tennis a good deal in my life. It's a great sport. It's an important sport for kids to learn who don't want to play football or don't want to skate on a hockey rink. Tennis has a lot. It's like most sports, it teaches a lot. And we talked just a little bit ago about wanting to have the playgrounds in town for these kids. Well, when they outgrow playgrounds and they want to get on a tennis court, we got to have tennis courts, too. And as I say, I don't see where it's either or. May I say that the more courts in town, the better because of one other reason. Adults want to play tennis, there aren't any courts around unless you go play, unless you join a private club. If you want to join Pull and Racket or you want to join the other club, the little club, yeah, then you can play tennis. More courts, more adults can get out and play tennis. It's a non-contact sport that you can play most of your life without fear of danger. So I support this. I was being swayed not to, but I'm swayed to, to support this and provide for our town those tennis courts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Sockel. Discussion? Yes, sir, over here on the right.
Doug Fox, Precinct F. Any of you who have ever seen me with anything hand-eyed will understand I will never play any racket-related sport ever. And I'm very sad to hear that Danish scientists say that. Means I'm going to live nine years shorter. I hope my life insurance people are okay with that. I want to speak in support of the article and against the motion to refer. I just think it's a travesty, what the courts have turned into. I understand the five of you on the Finance Committee that are upset about the maintenance. I think that's a discussion when or if we wanted to reconstruction on them, you know, of whether there's maintenance in place, but I think we got to study them no matter what. You know, I think of the blue tree, like, obviously, we didn't do a good job maintaining that, and it died, but we didn't say we're not going to give the town a blue tree, even if it's a little small sad one now. So I think the town needs courts up at the high school, so I encourage that. I'm against the motion to refer. I fully support somebody building courts of dreams in Needham, if they want to do that, to build courts, like the hockey rink of dreams or whatever, but it's a discussion for another day. Please fund this study. Thank you.
I don't know if the blue tree is sad. I don't think that's. That's just my own personal opinion. I can't have opinions. I'm neutral. Blue tree is not sad.
Jeremy Chow from Precinct D. As a father of three kids who grew up on these tennis courts, who went on to play for the high school team, produced state championship teams on the girls team, and my son an individual state finalist and who won the South Sectional. I certainly understand the value of these courts, and I fully support that we need to do something immediately right now about those four courts. I also agree that there should be a long-term plan for increasing the number of courts for the increased popularity of the sport, but we have an immediate need right now. So I'm against referring it, and I do support the article as currently stated, and I urge my fellow team members to support it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chow. Discussion in the back.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Carol Erwitz from Precinct J. I had a question for both the article and the motion to amend, to refer. With Article 20, we have, we give continually money to the Athletics Facilities Fund. I'm just curious why this would not come under the auspices of that fund that now has accumulated almost $1 million, since this is an athletic facility for our town? Why do we not use the money that we have been saving earmarked for athletic facilities for this purpose? And just as a point of information, if it does get referred, is the committee a recommendation or a stipulation, the Citizens Committee? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Erwitz. So I'll direct your first question because this is an appropriation from the Community Preservation Act funds. Mr. Pingator, the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee, to respond to the selection of this project for funding by the CPC, as opposed to some other source such as what you say, Mr. Pingator, to respond to the member's question.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. With respect to the member's question, design funds, I think based on the language of that, of the athletic fund, it's somewhat unclear as to whether or not we could appropriate design funds. But in our discussions, when the CPC consulted with the Select Board and we were discussing the potential amount of the full restoration of the courts, we, there was a discussion that we would be looking for funds other than exclusively from the CPC, and that would also include the athletic, yeah, the athletic fund that we appropriate funds, too. So that's a potential source for the reconstruction, and we've been discussing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pingator. And Ms. Erwitz, we can ask Mr. Siegentaller, but I believe Mr. Siegentaller's motion to refer the input from a Citizens Committee, I believe he wants to be mandatory. Is that right, Mr. Siegentaller, or do you want it permissive?
I wasn't aware if I could make it mandatory, but I feel this particular survey is so narrow that we need something much broader than this. And so I guess mandatory would be great.
Sure. I mean, you can form that, frame that as you wish because it's a motion to refer for further study. So discussion, further discussion.
Jeff Heller, Precinct F. I am a tennis player, but, and I'm in support of the article, and I believe that, you know, this, and I'm against the amendment now. I mean, I think the amendment would be great, you know, to have, to study this, if we did this, you know, two, four years ago. This study that is on the floor now should have been done four years ago. So we were doing, reviewing the need for those tennis courts without having to lose them for two years. So the delay restoring these tennis courts for another year while we refer back, I think is just more than an inconvenience. It's a, it is, as someone said, a travesty to put our high school teams like this, and it compromise all our tennis players. So I, you know, and there's, it should, we should discuss this. And also, for the FinCom to say that they don't support funding this because they're concerned about maintenance, it's sort of like punitive for, you know, yeah, we need it, and, you know, but we want to build it, but, you know, we're concerned. So why don't we spend some time and look at the maintenance, not just for these courts, but look at the maintenance for all the other courts in town so we don't run into this problem again? And I also maybe would suggest that the selectmen look at whether or not we want the maintenance of these to fall under Park and Rec, and might it not fall under the facilities study? Have that management under DPW because it is, you know, facilities in this town, and I'd like that to be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heller. Discussion. Did the Finance Committee want to talk about that? I saw some movement down there. Okay. Discussion. Yes, right here in the blue. Yes, right here in the blue.
Evan Rouse, Precinct D. There's been some emphasis in this conversation about sort of really competitive-ranked players. I just wanted to point out, there's a reason to have four courts at a high school where other people who might not be particularly fantastic players can learn to play tennis and apparently live nine years longer.[1305.65][1305.65](laughter) So, I mean, it's not just for the competitive teams, it's for everybody. Thank you.
I think we're going to, we're going to need a lot more courts than four, I think.[1315.83][1315.83](laughter) This is, this is catchy. Discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Jennifer Buehl from Precinct G. It seems like we're all on the same side, and so I'm not sure why there isn't some sort of compromise or a motion for amendment, that if we vote for the fifth study and the 50 grand, that then the second half of that, is that there is a commission, or isn't there a way to combine the motion? It seems like we would all be pretty happy and live longer, so I think that would be great. I was, I'm for tennis, and I was just surprised that even the high school coaches weren't involved in this process, so there's a way to meet immediate needs, but then also have our eye on long-term planning. So I guess I make a motion to amend the amendment? No, a motion to amend.
Well, no, so tell me, that's okay. Tell me what you'd like to accomplish.
What do I want to happen?
See, the problem, here's, let me just explain where we are. So we have a request, town meeting is requested, to appropriate the sum of $50,000 for design and engineering associated with the reconstruction of those courts. So we have, that's in front of town meeting in the form of a main motion. And then Mr. Siegenthaler is saying that he would like the subject matter, that is, whether to design and reconstruct those courts, to be looked at further by the Park and Rec Commission, so...
So I would like to amend the warrant article for the study and just add that if it is passed, that part of it is a mandatory moving forward and using the language that was put by, to refer it back, by having a mandatory committee that actually involves more people looking into...
Okay.
If you could put that in a precise language for me, Mr. Moderator.[1459.33][1459.33](laughter) It's 11, I have two kids, I have barely hair. Compromise is often...
Don't say it's 11, because there's a gentleman over here who's going to just pop up right when you say it's 11.[1471.51][1471.51](laughter) So it's, it's not quite 11.[1478.01][1478.01](laughter)
The train's still running, we know.
So, so I want to, I want to sort of, I want to help. I mean, you could, and I don't know how the requesting organization, which I believe, you know, would have to probably weigh in on this, but you could amend this. No, actually, I'm sorry, this is CPC. You can't amend it. I just remembered that. I'm trying to be helpful, but unfortunately, it's a CPC appropriation, and you can't amend it. So we either have to, right now, we either have to pass it or turn it down, or you have another alternative currently, which is a motion to refer. So, sorry, just...
No compromise. Okay.
No, well, it's a matter of kind of, it's that messy law (laughter) that it gets in the way, and that's what happened here with CPC when we adopted the Community Preservation Act. So it's a, it's an up or down vote at town meeting floor. And sorry, I was just so far down the path to try to help, you know?
I know, you were really, we were so close.
That I forgot the law. Me, I forgot the law.
Well, it's almost 11.
I know, but I remembered. It is.[1558.83][1558.83](laughter) It's not quite 11, though.
But not yet.
Discussion?
Mr. Moderator?
Under Article 20, Mr. Gerstle.
I'd just like to quickly answer that last question that was there, that any field design that includes both youth sports and high school sports, we will always take consideration from the athletic director and user groups.
Thank you, Mr. Gerstle, again, current chair of the Park and Recreation Commission. Further discussion under Article 20. Mr. Peckham moves the question, which is not debatable and requires a two-thirds vote for passage. On the motion to move the previous question, Mr. Peckham's motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Will the tellers assume their position?[1634.15][1634.15](laughter) Two-thirds is declared on a voice vote. The motion carries. That brings us to an immediate vote. Under our rules, when a motion to refer, a proper motion to refer, is tendered and on the floor for your consideration, its precedence is first, we reach that first, because a favorable motion, excuse me, a favorable vote on the motion to refer would dispose of the main motion, we would never reach it. So, so we come first to Mr. Siegenthaler's motion to refer. And Mr. Siegenthaler moves that the subject matter of Article 20 be referred to the Park and Recreation Commission for further study with the input of a citizens committee to be composed by Park and Rec on the subject of a public tennis strategy, and that the Park and Recreation Commission report back to a future town meeting on this subject. Motion refer requires a simple majority for passage. On the motion to refer, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay?
Nay.
The nays have it, the motion fails. That brings us to the main motion under Article 20. Joseph Barnes moves to appropriate for high school tennis courts design. The appropriation is $50,000. It is a Community Preservation Act Fund matter. Text to the main motion, identical to Article 20 in your warrant. On the main motion, majority required for passage. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay?
Nay.
The ayes have it, the motion carries, and I declare Article 20 disposed of. Mr. Cox.
Mr. Moderator. Adjourned at 1:50 at 7:30 PM, May 4. It is debatable. Any discussion on the motion? Very well. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? The ayes have it, we stand adjourned till 7:30, May 4.